Uh huh.
Race it.
That's like, I'm thinking.
Monster bike race.
That's like, is it giving your friends or is it you?
Yeah. We've done a couple of races together that offer. Trying to claim some. A work trip. Outstanding. They're trying to figure out. Makes me proud.
Why you recorded the video.
Uh huh.
I was gonna do it.
Yeah. So.
Little more. Some of the.
Tommy birthday. Oh, it's the third, yeah.
It's me. West Coast.
Yeah.
You cook like you're in a restaurant. Get my crab cheese.
That's all. Apparently they're not.
Other West Coasters. Yeah.
Fighting for it.
Yeah. Are you?
Um. Well. Just like. Good.
All the.
All around. I think. Yes. I know it's interesting. It's sort of. Right? Yeah. Well, now it's. Yeah.
Yeah, we're going there too.
Um, I'm not gonna. At the same time, I know that Roland and Barbara are not able to join us tonight. And let's get started because we want to hear from all of you if we can't have the time to do it. So first of all, thank you, thank you so much for being here. Um, I was at the meeting that, um, you guys did yesterday where you all kind of had an idea of kind of pulling together your goals and very moving. And, um, I just think, I feel like it's so important for us to stay connected and stay with open communication. I've, I've often said this, and I said it to you yesterday. We, we come here as a group twice a month, and it's the only time we can legally have a conversation, all of us together. But we make decisions that affect all of you, and you're here every day doing the work, doing the jobs. And so I just feel like, and we all feel the same way, but it's really important that we keep that lines of communication open, that we understand what your challenges are, what, um, you're doing, and we want to refer to each one of you, should have a liaison with the council. Please stay in open communication and let us know what's going on with your department and how we can support you and help you. So that's kind of the main focus of this meeting. And with that being said, we're gonna get started right off because each of you have like three to five minutes at the office. And, um, so we're gonna start with Bart from IT. Um, so we're gonna be a lot of trouble for you. And we'll just, it could be structured however, whatever you want to share with us. This does not have to be, we're not, we don't have any grand expectations of anything specific. Please share how your department's doing, what we can do to support you, and what your challenges and goals are for the long term.
Very good. Thank you for inviting me. It's a pleasure to present to the council, uh, kind of IT week. Some of this is gonna be a repeat for you, Sandy and for David, because you were in that meeting yesterday. But I thought I'd start with our mission. What I feel the IT mission is, is to lead and to unify and to help boost the productivity through the use of technology, programs and infrastructure that we have in the county. Uh, longer term, our, our vision is to, to stay up on that technology. As things are coming around like AI, who hasn't heard of AI in the last couple, three months? It's gonna hit us like a wave, and we want to be ready for that. In fact, it's built into our Google Suite today. If you haven't gone into your little, uh, icon, go check it out. You've, you've got, you've got AI, and it's built into the enterprise Google. Uh, some of that's gonna be to harness it and put it in the right places and use it for the right things. That's, that's our vision, is to make sure we, we have all of our systems and capabilities together, and that we build an infrastructure, the networks, the servers, the compute power, the desktop power, the storage, all the components that technicians like to build. That's where all the applications in the top end runs. So we, we need to worry about compatibility and interoperability about all the programs and stuff like that. So our vision is to build the infrastructure that's very highly reliable and redundant, and so it's available all the time. It's like electricity. You can't even remember it's there because it's just always there, right? Uh, of course, when you talk about vision, you can't not mention cybersecurity. Who hasn't heard about cybersecurity in the last couple of years? It, it kind of rules the IT world. So as we build all the building blocks and cornerstones of what an IT infrastructure should look like, and what the applications and stuff should look like, and interoperability, you've got to have an overarching focus on cybersecurity, or you're gonna end up out of, out of money and out of time, because somebody's gonna, somebody's gonna rent somewhere eventually. So uptime and availability, that's, that kind of rules today. How do we do that? With the core values of IT. Certainly, we need technical aptitude and technical knowledge and skill sets, right? But more than that, we need a, a service mentality. We need to recognize who our customer is and do the best job we can at meeting their requirements and their needs, and as they bring different tools into the, into the mix, that they fit in the tool, the tool belt, and, and they work seamlessly. So we're integrators, and, uh, that service mentality where everybody's a customer i- is kind of what we're built on. But accountability, reliability, and fiscal responsibility is what we strive for, and always have. There's nothing new there. Uh, I'll touch on a couple of goals, and then I'll be done. Our main goals this year, as far as what we're gonna try to do, is rebuild almost countywide, the Wi-Fi infrastructure. Right now, there's an access point sitting right under the bench that all your iPads run off, and it is kind of like electricity. You just assume it's there and it's working. Well, it's about ready to fail because that stuff's 12 years old, and that's the big capital thing that I pushed through the budget this year, was let's get the Wi-Fi infrastructure back up to where it needs to be. And in IT, that's a moving target. This year, it's Wi-Fi. Last year, it was storage. It's been compute. It's been lots of things, because you pretty much continually have to keep a refresh schedule going of every component in IT, or it's either a security risk, or it's outdated, and it becomes a performance problem, then you got a productivity issue. So my capital improvement plan, which I developed eight years ago or something, when I was relatively new here, involves a set cadence of refreshing the key gear that keeps this county running. Uh, obvi- obviously, our objectives are to keep downtime at a very minimum, meet the needs and requirements of all the departments and all the people that use the gear, because, believe it or not, everybody realizes on IT, so we're, we serve the entire county, and we serve TV to the community, and we serve data from the tax roll to the end constituents, the title companies, the realtors. We kind of become the data distributors of the county too. And with that comes, uh, a stewardship and a responsibility to make sure people that access the data have the rights to access the data and the need to access the data, instead of just allowing it to be a free-for-all. Uh, obviously, we have a lot of systems where data-driven, because systems generate metrics and data. So the data drives, you know, we can tell any individual system how, what its uptime percentages is. You've heard about five nines? That's what we strive for, is like as close to a hundred percent availability uptime. Yeah. That's probably all I can do in about five minutes, but I, I totally entertain any questions or get into any weeds you want to get into.
Do you have any questions for Bart? Thank you so much for being here.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bert.
Is anyone else in a time constraint with any of you?
Yes.
Good afternoon. Um, so just to cut straight to the chase here, our principal goals for this year firstly is to manage growth. It's seeming more and more likely, uh, with our legislative session, as mentioned on day one, uh, our district, the first district, is likely going to get another judge. A justice court and juvenile court hybrid is what it's looking like, it's going to happen, uh, to handle the increase in juvenile cases, as well as the misdemeanor cases that are heading into our district court because of the closure of city justice courts around the county. Now, what that means to us is we'll probably need another attorney to handle that courtroom. Um, also, we have very qualified attorneys in our office, which means that many of the people who are drawn to judgeships come from our office. You may remember Judge Walsh, he was a prosecutor here in our office. If we do get this juvenile court judge, one of the best fits in this entire region of northern Utah would be Daniel Major, uh, my chief deputy. He's been practicing in juvenile court for many years, and he's very qualified, and he'd likely put in for that position. I can't speak for him, um, so maybe he has different thoughts, but it seems likely that he may, because that would be a good step up for his career. He's probably the best qualified in this valley for that position. So, uh, that being said, managing growth, an additional attorney probably, possibly a new legal assistant, uh, to meet that challenge, as well as replacing, uh, valuable and experienced employees. So managing growth, that comes with, uh, its own challenges, because we are out of office space right now. Um, we converted our library upstairs into office space to try and squeeze more life out of this building, so, um, additional, additional space needs. We'd like to stay in this building and make it last. We don't want to have to spend fifteen million dollars to bomb for a new building. We want to make this building work, uh, so we are going to have to explore some additional options, uh, with the other members of our county team who are in this building, uh, to try and see what, what we can do to meet that challenge in a fiscal responsible way, uh, to drive new financial obligations for the county. Uh, second, our next goal is to continue to enhance compliance in the county with state code, and that means compliance with state code, compliance with grant requirements, uh, to make sure that our county is as transparent and law-abiding as any in the state of Utah. Third, this is a big goal for our Victims Services, uh, Division of our department, is closer work with our community partners. Uh, we've been entering into a much closer collaboration with CAPSA. Uh, we're working with them on, uh, some of their grant applications. We've been working in much closer cooperation with the Red Cross, uh, to try and meet the needs of those people in our county who are, um, victims of circumstance, maybe not necessarily victims of crime, where it's not, uh, necessarily the purview of the county attorney's office and victim services to help those people, but we still recognize that there is a need, and we want to help those people and bridge that gap. So those would be our top three, is managing growth, enhancing compliance, and closer work with our community partners. Some of those, uh, will be bigger challenges to resolve than others, and, uh, will probably involve budget openings in the future, once things are nailed down with the legislature, but we'll kind of do that when it's appropriate.
I wanted to ask, how many justice courts are still operating in our county?
Uh, Hiram Justice Court is still functioning, uh, but North Logan and Smithfield Justice Courts have applied and are likely going to be placed, uh, this year. Logan City Justice Court is still functioning. I think Wellsville and Nibley meet at the Hiram Justice Court, so that's still functioning, but, uh, um, my understanding is that the Hiram City's Justice Court Judge is mandatorily going to have to retire here in the next two years to eighteen months. Uh, I'm not sure if they would continue on without him seeing the signs, once it's time to retire. So, uh, the prognosis countywide is decline.
Justice courts.
Thank you.
Um, when we get our audit in, I'm just gonna circle down the list now.
Well, Wes is, uh, working on that. Uh, thank you. Uh, excited to be here. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, uh, briefly with regards to, uh, audit and finance. With, uh, for some context, we're dealing with a couple of challenges in those departments. Over the last couple of years, of course, we've suffered a, a lot of turnover, uh, as, as staff has changed, and we've had a, a noticeable, uh, degradation or impact in our institutional memory. In our institutional memory. For example, I was speaking with the department head, uh, this morning, who said, um, hey, nobody in finances asked me for such-and-such a report for, for two or three years now. And, um, I checked with finance, and, and that was a cap that we didn't realize we were missing, uh, since, uh, since all the turnover. That said, uh, the staff that we have is exceptional. They're motivated, and their work quality is absolutely, uh, the highest, uh, the highest quality. Our goals, as we look at 2025, are primarily twofold. One, we're going to, um, restart the internal audit function, uh, that has been discontinued over the last, uh, ten years or so. Um, we are working with other counties to jumpstart that by borrowing their audit programs, uh, using their, uh, resources to, to make, so we won't have to start from scratch on those areas. Uh, the second focus that we have, uh, at this point is, uh, is in the budget process. Um, there's a lot of opportunity here for, um, modernization. We're looking primarily to focus on making this more helpful, both at the department head level and the executive level, uh, and to give greater visibility to council members as well, and to citizens, citizens themselves. During the process, they can see what's going on. After the process, they'll have an electronic budget workbook that they can refer to and see exactly what the notes and the books of the, uh, budget process are there. Are there any questions that I can answer for you? Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay. Everybody just. Okay. Um, right then.
All right, thank you for letting us all get together. So I'm getting over a cold, so if I cough, I apologize. Um, so for our goals for this office, it's kind of nice to just be the clerk, you know, clerk and auditor, so we can focus more on one subject. Um, so our short-term goals for this year, we want to be, um, have more community outreach, um, with, coming with the, coming off of the presidential election, we wanted to make sure that, you know, the public knew exactly what our office was doing and being more transparent. So by that, we're gonna expand our social media outreach, and we're, you know, getting more involved in other local stakeholders, for example, the university this year, seeing if we can get, you know, keep some students how to fill out an envelope, or understanding that they need to change their address when they, um, when they move to get registered votes. We also are doing quarterly open houses this year. Um, our first one's gonna be in March, um, Sunshine Week is what they call it, but it's Government Transparency Week, which would probably be a great way to do that. Um, we're also wanting to get even like the little kids involved in the voting process, so our office has decided that we're gonna do a little I Voted sticker design contest, so they can get more involved and understand the process a little bit better. Um, we are continuing to streamline our processes. Um, we are currently refreshing, um, our equipment, so we have a couple of our poll pads that are aging out, so we'll be redoing that. Our goal is to do that every, every year with the budget that we have. And then, uh, for our long-term, oh, and continuing digitizing our records. We want all of our, all of our institutional records to be open to the public, and so they can view them online, so they can draw a list of them. And then for our long-term, our long-term goals is dealing with growth. Um, from 2020 to this presidential election, we gained fifteen thousand extra registered voters, and so we're just kind of preparing for the larger, um, populations when it comes to the next five, 10 years. So, you know, prepare to, you know, update our equipment or get lar- larger equipment. So that will probably come down the pipeline, that are larger voting ballot tabulation, when you get an extra one, or get something bigger to withhold the population of. Um, other than that, we're doing great. Yeah. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Oh, what do you want to say?
Yeah.
Just people who have seen this, just for everybody. Um, I know that yesterday you said there were several bills that you were watching.
Yes.
I, I, as a council, I would like to have, when you introduce any bills that you're watching that are appropriate to your department, or something that is, um, I have a word here, that maybe you can help advocate to the legislators, will you send those to the county, like, somebody that is a former bill tracker? And make sure that we are, um, aware of bills that are affecting you in the different departments. Everyone will kind of be that, be that manager, so we're not all siloed and, and what we're kind of. Okay, it's perfect. Um, reporter.
Good afternoon. Um, the project we have chosen to focus on is updating and digitizing the ownership maps. Adam, I know most of you know about this project. If you don't mind, I brought a little example here. I think it'll be helpful if you can see what we're doing, have I'm talking. So, if you don't mind, I know it's kind of big, but the top one is our old MyLars, it's in a plastic cover, and then the bottom ones are any of them. Just so you can visually kind of see the difference from the old to the new. Um, so prior to 2021, these maps have been hand drafted on MyLars, and by digitizing them, we can update ownership changes, acreage adjustments, and dimensions quickly and efficiently. So through the new maps, you know, we, as documents are recorded, we can go into the AutoCAD program, update those, and instantly get them out to the public, rather than having to scan them and do all that. It just instantly goes out through the recorder app. Um, our short-term, um, I need to create space and infrastructure in our office to house the six interns that will be contributing to this project, so I gotta find some space. I've got it figured out for three of them, but I've got to figure out for the other three, and Bart and Randy are gonna help me figure out how to get the resources back there, so we have, we can use computers back there for three more people. Um, we have received ARPA money for the years 2025 and 2026, and this is what is gonna allow us to hire those interns from May to October. And during this time, our goal is for them to complete the city blocks and subdivision maps. There are approximately four thousand of this set of types of maps. That's, um, we've got about fourteen hundred remaining of that four thousand. So we've worked really hard in the last year and a half and got a lot of those done that the interns can help with. Um, our four full-time mappers will be mapping the PLSS maps, and the goal for this one is twenty-five a month. I'll explain why that's so much lower. Um, this work is above and beyond their daily office work. The PLSS maps refer to all the maps that are outside of the city blocks and subdivisions, and they require a high degree of drafting skills, knowledge of abstract research, and other skills that take up, um, take time to, to develop. Um, so that's why the maps are so much longer to get done, because the other ones, they kind of can copy, but the PLSS maps, they have to research, and depending on the location and the area and the problems, it can take a day for a map, it can take three days for a map, it can take a week for a map, it just depends on the map. Um, we will gather the data from these two years to better, better understand the possible completion date for this project. Um, our current projection is optimistic and hope we can save maybe around 2029, but it's very contingent on the market, and the factors include like interest rates, development, and conditions that are outside of our control of how much my staff can actually put towards just working on those maps. Um, so they definitely, they definitely weigh heavily on that completion date. Um, but I invite anybody that doesn't know the process of how these maps work. It seems when you look at them, like, oh, this shouldn't be that hard, but if you saw how much time it takes for them to complete a map, and maybe watch how they have to research and do that, you might have a better understanding. So my office is open anytime anybody wants to come in and kind of see how that process works, and mainly, our main goal is just these maps. That's pretty much where all of our focus is right now. Anybody have a question?
I have a question. Uh, we, I, I've come and spoken to you about, uh, digitizing some of the older records that we have, some of those really old, uh, books that have like a deed card description of their properties and things.
Like their actual deeds themselves?
Yeah.
And they're all digitized. They're all.
Those are all digitized.
We've completed all those projects, so those projects are done. We use the ARPA money for that, and they're all available online.
Oh, good.
So this is really the last big, big project.
Of getting all of our historical things.
And this is not just like getting them out, but it's like re, redrawing them and getting them so that we can quickly get the information out and be able to read them a lot better.
Cool.
Thank you for this opportunity. Um, our mission is empowering older adults to live a fulfilling and independent life with dignity. Our vision is to be the heart of our community, where older adults thrive with vitality, purpose, and joy. Um, our values are compassion, excellence, and trust. We also want to be of service to our future. Our number one goal for this year that we're gonna be working on is doing definitely some outreach to our community to let more individuals know about Meals on Wheels, as we know this older adult population is growing and aging, and so we want to make sure, um, in outreach with the medical providers, the health hospice, and, um, health agencies, that they know about Meals on Wheels, that we can be a resource to the community. Also, we want to, we have set the goal to do more education in Medicare and Medicaid, as we support, um, our patrons with this. We also assist them in filling out applications for food stamps, and sometimes even housing, so more of a resource and educating individuals about the resources available to them. Um, another goal that we have is to provide and secure funding for our Meals on Wheels vehicles. We have two of them that we purchased through a CDBG grant back in 2017, and, um, they are now getting close to a hundred thousand miles. So we are going to be, um, working with, um, CDBG again, hoping that we can secure some of that grant money, and also, um, outreach and looking and see if there's, um, individuals in the community through donations that can help with that. And then lastly, our, um, biggest goal is to work towards another senior center for the community. Um, just wanted to talk to you about some of the growth that we've had, um, in the center. Back in 2020, through, um, some funding through ARPA, we were able to purchase a new data system, which would allow us to track our, our patrons. And in 2020, we had nine hundred and sixty-one registered users, and as of December thirty-first, we are now at to three thousand one hundred and twenty-five. And when I checked on Sunday, we are up to three thousand one hundred and sixty of individuals just coming to the center throughout all of these years. Um, through Meals on Wheels, we've grown since, um, we checked back in 2021 to December thirty-first, we've had a fifty-five percent increase. Um, in 2021, we served twenty-eight thousand meals, and just this last year, we was served it up to a hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and thirty-two. Um, in all of the years total, I'm sorry, from 2021 to 2024, we served a hundred and fifty thousand meals. In 2024, that came to forty-three thousand three hundred and twenty-one meals, serving five hundred and four individuals. So from last year to this year, we had a twenty-four percent increase. We're also seeing that increase in people coming to the center, as I mentioned, um, with that registration, and that is affecting our programming. We've in, we've added more program as interest is, is there. Um, we've added the arts. We have now, um, a ukulele class, we have a dance class, we have a ballet class, we have ceramic instruction, watercolor instruction. And our numbers are just increasing, and for us, in the senior center, the space for our kitchen is starting to fill a little tight, and as well as an on-the-go purpose room. And so those are the goals that we'll be working on. Any questions? Yeah.
I know last year there was a gift. Tell you what that was done, so I can report back to the band with that.
The sixty thousand?
Yes.
We received that donation for sixty thousand, and we are asking to have that rolled over for this year, to see if we can use it to go towards our capital funds.
Thank you. Hey, um. Anyone from the library? Um, fairgrounds.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, uh, to be here today. I feel like the Fairgrounds is in a little bit of a unique situation compared to a lot of departments where in the business. the business of, of, uh, helping people make memories and, um, you know, providing venues for them to host their events or attend their events. So part of, um, part of being able to, to provide those services is, um, maintaining and improving the facilities that we have almost entirely exclusively. Um, you know, those are kind of our two functions, not just for, um, all the other things, but the county fair and some of those county sponsored events as well. So as we, as we look at, um, some of the things that, challenges that we are faced with, um, we've got an aging infrastructure there that, uh, has had very little done, uh, over many, many years. One particular area of concern for me is, um, you know, that one of the main water lines that feeds the fairgrounds. We've had three leaks in that water line in the last five years. It's going to be a major, kind of a major project to replace that. Just recently, a week ago, two weeks, yeah, two weeks ago, when it was sub-zero outside, we had a water leak in that water line. And, uh, you know, one of those during a major event would, would cripple an event. It would cripple the county fair. So, uh, that's one of those things that's, that's going to be relatively important as well as some of the other, other infrastructure things that, uh, that we deal with. Roads and trees and bridges and bridges, not like Matt's bridges, but, uh, you know, power, all those things were concerned. IT recently installed the point-to-point network tower down there, uh, a critical component of, of the point-to-point network. Uh, we found out a month or so ago that if the power goes down to that, it also shuts down the sheriff's office right now because of the cut fiber. We found out because we experienced that. So, um, some critical things, some things not as critical. You know, as, as host to the county fair and also being involved with the county fair and rodeo, another thing we're dealing with is space. And I've mentioned this to this group before, we're, we're running out of room and short of, you know, buying property around us, which I'm not sure is going to be possible. Uh, our long-range vision is to be looking for, uh, a location somewhere in the valley, hopefully centrally located to eventually move the fairgrounds to, I, I think it's inevitable. You know, we had 80,000 visitors for the county fair over those, uh, four days, four or five days. And we're just, we don't have the, the bandwidth to be able to, to deal with too many more people. We're impinging on neighborhoods with parking issues and, um, you know, that's, and that's another one of the, what I foresee is a, uh, more of a short-term goal is we need to be looking at parking at the fairgrounds and how can we expand, uh, that to address the issues that, uh, that's happening with the neighborhood. So, um, I have an extensive list of all the little projects, but that's a 60,000-foot view of kind of some of the things that we're, we're faced with and looking at, uh, trying to address right now. Any questions? Thank you.
Uh, this is my report, Bart. This is as of, you notice on the bottom, as of 3:07 this afternoon, Barbie, you and I get a share.
Okay, that's great. I'll share with.
Hold up. Andrew, we put on the screen, can I put your website?
Yep.
So this is one of the income secrets. This is something we choose every single day. This is what's on the program. 10% of our income has to come from profits. Heard about growth. That is something that we're dealing with on a regular basis. But if you look at the top right now, this is telling you, we've got 494 people that are, on their 2024 backs. Not a lot of people.
Everywhere that is.
That's part of the. Turn that over on the backside. The state average the last year, I've written something that's huge too. So the state average was 93.92. As of today, right now, we're at 98.82. So that top portion is a day-by-day comparison for the 28th. It's early back for several years. The second is where we ended as of November 3rd. But the third is a little sad. If you notice, our best year, we were at 99.96. You see that highlight on there? So we're 98.82. We've got till Friday to try to beat that. If you go back to the front side, before I came here, I was going to get over 2 million, which we did. So we were at 1.9 million overall. So goals and tracking, that's important because as you see, like for this year's tax, so we have two. I can tell you by name, but there are other counties that I've considered. My idea is with dignity, we take care of them on the front end. They never get to the property end. So there are two. We have good commitments on one of them. The family doesn't want them to move into, so they're going to probably pay the taxes for the property. It's cheaper for them to do that. And the other one, um, specifics wise, there's a dad who's a widow. He's just over. He's a working man. I don't have that answer yet, but even next year, he's 16. So you can kind of see the process. We just try with dignity. If you get them taking care of them, they're not on your link. It's here at the top here. Take care of it that way. So again, some summary numbers you can review and, and, um, that's kind of where we're at. The next page talks a little bit about our historical abatements. I'd like to work again with, um, Matt Fisher, who is a CPA in that process. If you look, some trends, if you look at our circuit breakers years ago, when we've heard from Gisele, that we've got 20% more in a very shorter time. You know, the prices of taxes are going up. Our circuit breakers are going way, way down historically. So I'd like to work with Matt. Hopefully we can identify some things where we can help other people and do that. So trends and tracking is something also that just is telling stories. So today I'll talk a little bit about going maps. And we've already talked about some of the gap parcels and changing some of those. So those are other where we've worked in our office that we'll work together with Timmy and it goes to Brett and it goes to collect. So we work together. So Andrew, if you can, or we can look to this top page. If we go instead of the treasure, let's go to the delinquency. See if we can get to the department. What? Could have the treasure? Now let's look at our delinquency property tax. Look, the very bottom one. But think and click on the map if you would, please. So without IT, we couldn't do any of this stuff. So we're very dependent on other folks. But this is a live right now where our delinquency are, if you go on the right-hand side, let's put this parcel in. Andrew, put 08. Make sure you put the dash. 08, dash, 190, dash, 0601. So anybody can go and see this information through the month of January and I call it the heat map. And it's wonderful. You just let that sit for a second as it builds with something that Todd and Carrie just built. So one of our developers, Sierra, if you wait a second as it populates, it takes a second for it to upload. And it should be, but all the ones that are delinquent are shown in red. That's updated every hour and it's the best thing. When a neighbor comes in and says, hey, my taxes are delinquent. Another tool. I don't know why that's not quite updating. But that screen on the last page, it actually even tells how many delinquent dollars that entity are. Like Sierra builders is your three months. That shows if you look on the upper and the bottom side, it's scale 100,343 dollars. That's a much different picture than 1,400.
So there was a bunch of those there. Is this just the tax notice they missed or what? Because you see that they have a bunch of lots there.
Developers will play the game. It's cheaper there. Have 10% interest then for them to pay that in some cases. But still, we reached out this week to them. If they can do that, that brand that you just viewed and saw, it's, it's a powerful and immediate and you can look by name, by number. It's just cool. Any questions?
Thank you for.
So we'll continue and continue to collect some things.
Definitely are the career of you. Thanks so much. Uh, this is your Julie.
Good afternoon. Thanks for a chance just to give you a little update on some of the things that are on my horizon right now. Um, first of all, I just decided to do three gargantuous projects at once because why not? Why would I spread it out and make it easier myself? No. So right now, we're in the middle of redesigning our entire website to help it in, improve the visitor experience. Um, it'll also automate many updates and things that we've had to do by hand in the past. So that's, um, that's awesome. We are also changing our calendaring system that is embedded within our website. They'll also automate a lot of things that we've had to do to, you know, because in the past, we've relied on organizations and events to submit their own events to the calendar for us to publish. And this will, um, automatically glean that from three different sources and then we will still have a chance to approve them. So I always joke about Bob's naked birthday party because somebody tried to submit that one of my first years, um, working here. It's like they didn't think we were going to review them in advance. But so in case Bob's naked birthday party shows up again, we'll be able to keep that from being published on our, on our website. So those are also, I mean, there's a lot of training. There's a lot of details. There's a lot of things going into both of those projects. Uh, we also are in the, uh, middle of replacing our cash register system, which means that we have to re-enter all of our inventory, all of those numbers, all of those codes, all of our taxes, all of our everything in there. Um, but that's okay because it's going to help us be so much more efficient because our current system is pretty much a step above an abacus. So I think this is really going to help us a lot. But it's just these three projects especially just have a lot of work in the front end to, to make those happen. So, um, another, the fourth thing that I'm working on is working with different hotels to help them be qualified to, uh, receive national and international tour buses. And, um, there are some steps that they have to go through in order to be picked up by another agency that then sells tours to all, all over the world. Um, but if they're not listed with them, then they're not known about. And so we've been working for a long time, educating, um, tourism organizations, like tour agents and bus tour companies, even around the world, in France, in Germany, in China. And, uh, they're super excited to come and then they look and there's no inventory in Logan of where they can stay. And that's really a detriment to us with as many tour buses as go through to check, to Jackson and to Yellowstone. So I'm working on remedying that. And it's not as simple as just being a chain that they recognize. Each owner has to approve that they're willing to sign off on a contract for a set rate. And sometimes that rate has to be guaranteed for up to three years, which is something that makes them a little hesitant to do it. Um, something else that you should know is that in 2023, tourists spent more than $230 million in Cash Valley, in Cash County. And so we are consistently making efforts to increase that number. And also tourism is kind of its own microcosm of things that go on here in Cash Valley. So everything from events to hotels, to restaurants, to organizations, to resources like the museums or American West Heritage Center, whatever it may be. Um, they all, we all work together to, to try to entice and encourage tourists to come here and spend all their money and get out. So, um, it's really important to me personally to try to keep a finger, my finger on the pulse of all of them. And it's, for example, already like how are we strategizing? Because Utah Festival Opera is not going to be performing at the Apple Theater and the Lyric Theater is going to be renovating. So they're moving all their shows up on campus. And so it's like, what can we do to help support those restaurants that are within walking distance of those two properties? Like it's not just people in hotels that are on my mind. And so it just, it's, there's a lot that we, um, try to pay attention to and support. So, uh, we are just going to, you know, continue our best to be involved with those organizations. I sit on the board of several major organizations, uh, for events and, and tourism. So, uh, we just do our best to try to support in any way we can. So that's what's up. Have a lot. It's good? Good. And I'm coming up on a big anniversary this week. I'm going to hit 20 years with the county. And I, um, need an artificial hip, I think. Now I feel like that and I said that. But I just want to express my appreciation to you for the opportunity that I've had to serve in this position and for the flexibility that you give me to, to be able to do my job and hopefully help all, everyone around us, um, be successful. I've really enjoyed it and hope to continue to do so for a good long time.
How do you, how do you track tourism differentially than somebody who's here on business or whatever else? Or do you say anybody who's here, that's tourism? Differentiate that? Something, how do you track that?
Luckily I don't. I don't track any of that. And the reason is, is because we have the Kim Gardner Institute from the University of Utah that has a formula that provides numbers for us. They include, um, business tourism as well as recreational tourism, um, together in a pool. Cities like Salt Lake City have a better way because their Visitors Bureau manages conference centers themselves to be able to track what conferences are there. So the attendance and, and financial impact that way because of business, but we don't have a way to do that here.
So the 230 you stated came from the Gardner Institute?
Yeah, and I should have told you that. Cause otherwise if I would have made it up, it would have been even higher. Yeah. Any other questions?
Thanks. Um, Public Works. Who are you?
Thank you.
So again, for introductions, Matt Phillips with Public Works. I did have a little shaving accident this weekend and so I had to go all in. So I've, I've been getting teased and harassed the last couple of days. So, um, never again will I shave and I'll double check my razor next time. Madam Chair, thanks for this opportunity. If I don't hit the marks that, that I needed to, I apologize. I wasn't, five minutes isn't very long. If, if Public Works is very dynamic, we have a lot of varying departments and divisions underneath us. So for me to go over all of our intricate details or objectives for the goals that we have would probably take a lot more time than what we have. So what I've tried to do is just get, kind of give you guys our mission and our vision, some of our values and some of our overarching goals that we have. But I did want to focus a little bit on one of the things that we as a Public Works would really like to do is become an accredited, um, Public Works department. So APWA has a very extensive, um, accreditation program for Public Works departments, which will, you know, solve a lot of our problems that we have. It'll help us to establish master plans, stormwater plans, um, kind of a chain. A lot of the things that we've lost is due to public knowledge of, you know, someone retires, one of the road superintendents retires and a lot of that information is lost. So it'll help us with our record keeping. But it requires, uh, a lot of collaboration with other departments. It requires us to work with HR to make sure that our hiring policies and our, you know, benefits and it requires us to work with the attorney to write some of our standards and practices. So it will be overarching and a lot of input and help from other departments too. We have a lot of, you know, smaller goals as far as the amount of road work to do and bridges to repair and, and a lot of those things, they're not on this. So again, this is kind of our overarching goals. They're not on this. So, again, this is kind of our overarching goal. One of the things I did want to mention in this meeting is the accreditation program. A couple of years ago, there was zero public works departments in Utah that were accredited. Since then, there's been a couple. So, we were kind of hoping that we might be able to say we were one of the first, but we won't be able to do that anymore. But that would be a very big thing for our department, for the county. If you guys think, goes along with part of our vision statement is, when you think of public works departments, a lot of times, people think of UDOT. In our Valley Logan City, they look at those for their wisdom. They look at that for their experience. One of our visions is to become that recognized leader in the state, in the valley, is having good quality employees, that we're doing things the right way, we're staying up on innovations, be able to be that recognized leader so that we can have other cities look to us instead of, you know, everyone looking at other cities. And I feel like we're coming a long ways, but we do want to be recognized as one of those leaders in providing good quality services and our processes and our efficiency and all those things. Again, if I missed the mark, I apologize. I do think that, and I'd like to, you know, for some of the new council members. Keegan, I would like to personally invite you to come out, see our operations, tour our facility, and get familiar with kind of the things that we do. There is a lot going on over there. So, anytime someone wants to come by, we're happy to kind of spend the time with you and go over details of some of your operations and our equipment and all that. So.
How close would you say you are to becoming accredited?
It's a three-year program. So, the very first one is you do a deep dive into yourself. So, it's not a short one. That's why it's one of our long-term ones. It does cost a little bit of money. The very first step in that is to look within and do a self-evaluation of where you are and where you're failing. And once you do that, then you get, you apply to the program. Once you apply to the program, then you start getting a lot of support from other public works facilities that help you, that can give you some guidance. The APWA Association will come in and start doing this. But they want you to, they want you to do a little self-evaluation. And they recommend that you actually have a staff member that kind of is kind of in charge of that. They don't want you to take five years, ten years, right? They want you to do it in a year and a half, but average length is anywhere from two to three years. Because it does require other county departments, and so, that is one of our long-term goals. Playing without the last probably year to look into that, see how much it's going to cost us, start ordering some of those materials. That would cover our facility, that covers, you know, our fleet management, being accredited for all. Basically, everyone that's in your department has to have some kind of certification, and you need to have all those standards and stuff to actually get that accreditation.
Let us know what we can do to support you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, our facility's under construction.
I'll be brief. Just to give you a little update on my career, I came here twelve years ago. I come from an HVAC background, thirty years, electrician before that. Built some spec houses. So, that kind of uses my background. What our motto is in our department is, is to keep our buildings as look as very nice as we can, keep everything mechanical order, looking nice, people are safe, over security, so we keep the buildings as secure as possible. Also, we sell all the surplus property. We do that through a website. Our goals for the coming year are, repair the main sewer line. I don't know if you're aware of it, but this building's, once I got the storm drain repaired last year and hopefully solved the basement flooding, we found that we had a problem with our sewer drain. I found out about a week and a half, two weeks ago, that Logan City was going to put a new line out here on Second North. We, I ran a camera up our line late in the fall last year and found a big dip right down. What I mean by a big dip is it's full of water all the time. Figure that is what's causing the plugging, and that's why we're backing up this building. That's number one, and I think the project's going to start next February. So, that's top of my list right now. The issue with that is, that's the one thing on my list right here that's not funded. So, we may be coming to council. Hopefully, it's not going to cost a lot. It's going to be the most reasonable time to do it because Logan City's going to do a lot of it. In other words, they're going to do from their line, Ellen Road, all the way back to their property line. And it's not too far from there where the big dip is. That's one of the major projects we got going. We're in process of looking at prices right now for the auditor's office, add another office in that office. First bid was thirty thousand dollars. We're working that way down. I hire people in my department that are very well-qualified, and I want to be very productive. So, what we try to do is as much as we can for possible, and I talked to Matt about that, and I think we'll probably do as much work as possible on that office to save money. Hopefully, it's going to be a lot less than thirty thousand dollars. That's on my list, and that's my priority because we need another office in there. What's that? If not, I can show him. But I'm pretty sure he probably does. Each year, we replace two HVAC units on the admin building. Reason we're doing that is that we're out. The freon in them is obsolete. The new freon to replace that is already being replaced this year. So, it's a nightmare. So, what we do is we try to keep up, and I try to keep a low impact on anything that we do, any repairs we do, anything that we buy. We try to do a low impact, and that's why we only do so many every year. That way, they're not going to all wear out at the same time. And it's a low impact for the county because it's not going to cost one hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand. It's going to be in the ten to twenty thousand. We also, our LED lighting, which everybody is switching over to, we gradually started replacing everything with those. We replaced the big four-by-two lights in another building. On, whenever the ballast goes out, which is about a fifty-dollar item, we can buy a retro kit for a little bit more, and so, we'll replace them. We replace about twenty to thirty a year. Eventually, we'll have them all replaced. And again, the advantage to that is, is that we're not going to have a high impact dollar-wise on the county and the taxpayers. And then, they're not always going to, they're not all going to wear out at the same time. I mean, anyway, I'll be brief and quick. It looks like we're about out of time. We're adding auto locks to the other two doors to this building, so we'll be able to do a lockdown. This is all ARPA money now. The office in the sewer was not, and HVAC was not. The auto locks is being covered by ARPA money. And then, we're going to replace all our security cameras, and they will be capable of having voice. I don't know how the council feels about it, but I feel like we're going to leave that up to the department heads on whether they want voice in their departments. We have had issues in some departments when the voice would have been really nice. We had a guy in the motor vehicle that kind of blew up one time and broke things and crashed and all this. Would have been nice to have it then, but I feel like that should be left to the department heads. That's probably something that the executive or the council probably ought to decide. That one and the department. We also are adding lighting to the parking lot, another ARPA project. Let's see. Anyway, I think that's about it. Long-term, the parking lot needs to be re-asphalt. And the underlane foundation needs to be already done too. That's a huge project. I'll have to get with Matt and get prices and stuff, but I'm sure we're over a million. So, that's down the road, unless one of you's got a million. This building could probably use a generator someday. The other building's covered with a generator. This one is not. I think that's something, I do know that our grid is way overloaded in Cache County. People have outages out in the, oh, let's see, Mendon, Hiram, Millville, some of those areas have issues because they're at the end of the line. And we've been having brownouts for years. So, I know that's getting to, that could become a big issue, and I know that ours looking into the same thing. If you have any questions, ask.
It really is beautiful here.
What's that?
It is maintained beautifully in the holidays and it's beautiful.
Last year, I hired a new guy that repainted this whole building on the outside, which would have cost us a lot of money if we had hired somebody to do it. And I actually think he did a better job. So, we try to do as much as we can internally, and we try to save the county as much money as possible. Hopefully, we're doing a good job at that. Thank you.
I have on my list a personal management development services public defender in the airport. Is there anyone else that's way in on executives? And rock and fire department. So, we're going to try and ask you to do maybe three minutes.
Three minutes is great because I felt like I came a little bit unprepared based on the week and month that we've had dealing with insurance and lots of different things going on. So, I just wanted to cover our mission statement. We had been working on this starting last summer, and then with our meeting yesterday, it helped to just kind of put the final capstone to that. But our mission in personnel management is we are leaders and partners committed to delivering strategic and progressive human resource management solutions that support and inspire excellence in our workforce. And then, we've decided on, one, two, three, four, five values. The first one is integrity, always doing the right thing no matter how difficult that is. Culture, and one of our goals with culture this year is to give our orientation a revamp. We feel like that where our culture really begins is on the first day and that first impression. And so, we want to make sure that our new employees are receiving the very best that they can as we put our best foot forward in showing them what Cache County has to offer them. Another part of the goals that we have for culture is to strengthen the employee culture and doing that through appreciation events. I don't have time with that three-minute threshold, but on our Motivocity app, I was just looking at the appreciations that have been given. And it's amazing to see the good work that's been going on throughout all of the departments and leaders appreciating their team and also team members appreciating team members and not just in their own departments, but across the board. And that's really impressive and such a great tool that we have in order to be able to share those appreciations. Accessibility is one of our other values, and we're going to do this by upgrading our time clock procedures. You guys don't have to clock in or out. Be grateful because right now, it's really a system that we need to take care of. It feels like a dinosaur. And so, we'll be going to our bamboo HR system in order to do the clock in and clock out. We've been testing that in a few departments. My department, finance, and then a handful of fire has been testing that to make sure that we work all of the kinks before we roll that out. We'll be rolling it out to the rest of the fire department, the first pay period in February, and then moving forward with several different departments at the beginning of each pay period so that we can watch and make sure that we're not having any hiccups with that. As you well know, we should never be messing with people's pay because that's most important to them. So, getting them paid correctly is the best. Also, with that accessibility, we want to be able to give more bamboo HR education so that that tool can be used better by our employees, so that they understand that they can go there to find their personnel policies and procedures, any forms that they need, be able to check on their vacation and their benefits that they have, and really be able to utilize that tool. Respect is one of our other values, having that mutual respect and being able to find fair solutions. And then, excellence is our final value. With that, we're looking at a supervisor training program to be able to help not only department heads, but also those mid-level supervisors to understand proper HR procedures and laws and to really develop some good leadership skills. Also, what's been on my list for the seven years that I've been here is a policy and procedures update. And so, we're still going to keep going and keep trying to get that done. So, and then, finally, on excellence is compensation. We definitely want to be competitive, and with part of that value, my goal is to educate you as a council so that you understand the importance of where we're at and where we need to go in order to be competitive and to be able to retrain, retain, and attract great employees. So, hopefully, that was three minutes. There you go. Any questions? Yeah, you're welcome.
This is a good opportunity to look at it, and I was looking over that plan. It looks like we've accomplished about ninety percent of that plan in the first three years, and I wanted to thank you for that. We wouldn't have been able to do that. I want to thank David as well for the support. There's been a lot of good changes that have been made. I think we have great attorneys that do a hard job and they work hard, and we finally, I think, give them the support they need to do that. I'll just read my mission statement real quick. To provide exceptional zealous and ethical advocacy to the citizens of Cache County, ensuring their constitutional rights are fully protected and that justice is served fairly and equitably for all. I'm not going to go over all this, but my short-term goal in the next few years is, obviously, we would like some additional support for the public defenders as far as staff. I think what a huge part of the criminal justice system that's missing here is a social worker program. I think it's a big way to keep people out of the criminal justice system and possibly lower crime rates. We can have help to get employment in the programs, housing, all those different types of things that we don't have right now. We kind of do, but it's not all connected. If we had a social worker to do that, we just, this last year, got a social worker for child welfare cases, and I've seen a huge increase in helping the attorneys in case loads. But in the next long-term goals, we'd like to obviously be more structured like the county attorney's office. Whenever they grow or need additional people, we always need additional people. We'd like to have an office and hire on actual public defenders in the future. Hopefully, I'm going to continue to partner with the IDC to get grants and see if we can get that funded that way. But again, thank you for your time and opportunity, and if you have any questions, thank you.
Good afternoon. Well, our biggest goal is to have a safe and well-run airport. And how we do that, our mission statement is, we want to pass our FAA one thirty-nine inspection every year and interface well with the local community, our tenants, the community at large. Have intelligent and well-informed conversations with them and answer their questions. So, our vision is to have a knowledgeable, professional, and proactive team. This year, I've, my first year, I've spent a lot of time building a team. I've drawn from Utah State University's Airport Management Program. Two part-time people that are about to graduate with that degree and start in our full-time, we started yesterday, is also in that program. So, we've got some knowledge there, and we've got three values here. We want a knowledgeable, professional, and proactive team. So, one, knowledgeable, I, we're going to be in our operations manual, learning what the one, what does one thirty-nine standard mean? How often do you have to change the lights? How often, when should we start snow plowing? How much snow has to be cumulated before we start plowing? How to issue a NOTAM, how to pull the NOTAM down, how to notify the community of a runway closure, those sorts of things. So, in order to do that, we're going to have reviews and weekly meetings and training sessions on how to do those things and things to look for. Also, I want a proactive staff that can notice a problem, find the right action based on the advisory- on the advisory circulars from the FAA. How do I fix this? What part is approved to fix this? What's the, what's the way to fix this that it's approved? And follow those FAA mandated steps. So that's what we're doing right now is we're in a team-building phase. I think it's going well. Do we have any questions?
Thanks so much. Rob, Fire Department. I know. I'm sorry.
Not retired is number one, right?
Number three.
Not retired. Not retired.
H3. Okay, so our vision essentially, our mission is to protect lives, property, and the environment. Our vision is to provide a highly effective and efficient fire service in Cache County. And our values are fidelity, integrity, respect, and excellence. Fire. See how I did that? I'll talk about our two major goals. One is to determine the future of the fire service, which is a big one. And I can work on that because operationally, we're pretty sound. We'll continue working on the fire district stuff as we go. The last one is finding a new fire chief. So that's going to be also kind of a big deal because we want to keep things moving. And I have a lot of pride in our organization and I, above all, don't want to see it step backwards from the progress we've made. So those are the two major ones to work on.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Take your time on finding a fire chief. Hey, Jer.
Yes?
Larry.
Came to the hopper to make it quick.
Sorry, you've got the last three minutes.
You bet. And it will be three minutes. Bet.
Thank you again for your meeting yesterday. That was a very good segue into all of this.
Great. And we're excited to share all of those materials with the rest of the council and the rest of the county as well. I would say I've had a unique seat, having been in a room twice now. And one of the things that I've come to recognize even better is the world-class employees that we have and how much they care about. We do many things in Development Services. We have several divisions, including Development Services Admin is what one of the budget units is called, but the one to call out there is Enforcement. We do enforcement and Stephen Reader does a great job. But then also, we have Planning and Zoning, which includes both current, which is the big one, but also long-range planning. And the people we have there are professionals and they work so hard to apply the code so carefully. And that actually creates a lot of conflict and interesting, interesting challenges, I would say. But then also, we have built our Building Department, our GIS, and our Trails Divisions, sorry, those are all divisions. And when you meet with them and see what they're doing, just because they know that's the best leading standards in the industry, not because we're making them or any other pressures, it's just really inspiring. One of the unique opportunities and challenges that Development Services faces is that it's almost mind-blowing to think about how many different customers we have. I wrote it this way. We are under the constant pressure of processing development applications and other issues, but we are literally lodged between our county citizens as a whole, our applicant citizens, our review and approval citizens, and in my mind, that's like the Planning Commission and the council, our outside-of-the-county elected citizens, so all the mayors, our state code, our county code, and why not even throw in the United States Constitution? It's a really unique challenge to have to help citizens exercise their constitutional rights to property, but also to have to respect all of the same or similar rights that their neighbors have. And I would just like to say that I really do appreciate the service of the Planning Commission and of the council because I know that every single one of you care about doing your job well. It's just a really interesting way that it all weaves together. We are the regulatory or reviewing agency that gives you what you need to make the right decisions, and that's a big job. My, my personal biggest goal for this year is to actually, and I want to say this, not totally kidding, but kind of, but when everyone is complaining about the process, including citizens, all of those stakeholders we were talking about, including our own employees, that it's hard and they're frustrated, then we need to look harder both at our internal processes and at our main tool, which is our code. And we've talked with Jerus about how can we look at both to just help development go more smoothly? I think it really latches onto communication at the highest levels. And that's kind of a good overview of both our challenges and our goals for the year.
Any questions for Jer? I understand there are interviews tomorrow.
Tomorrow, restart. We're so excited.
All right. David, can we have you talk to us at the end of our meeting? Yeah, that'll give us a minute to meet before our five o'clock meeting. Thank you all so much for being here. I think this was a great, great meeting. I think that all together, we can work things out better and we really depend on you guys to communicate with us. So hopefully you feel that you can talk to us and let us know what's going on in your departments and how we can help you. So thank you. Thank you for being here. We'll let you go.
All of you ready? Hey, welcome everyone to the cash county council meeting tonight. We're glad that you're here. And we'll start out with, um, the opening by dear.
I'd like to actually have my open in the form of. Father in heaven, we're grateful to be able to gather together. One circumstance that we have, we're grateful for all the blessings that we share with each other. Grateful valley that we have. We're grateful for what power is provided for us. We're grateful that power should be to watch over us, help us, to encourage us to always do better. To look to each other all the time. We're grateful for opportunities to be able to be a service to each other. We're grateful that this is not just a community service. So we're always thankful to be individual. And that a person that lives in this beautiful valley, we pray that the decisions that are made here, we will be mindful of them, and we'll be mindful of each other. And we will also be able to share our, uh, thoughts for you. And grateful to be able to understand what you stand for. We're grateful those that are come here to also participate. We're grateful that they've also been felt and encouraged to do what they have to present. And we thank you for such all these things and services that everyone gives to us. Services whatever it is that you. We're grateful to them and their safety always, and history has been. They still were the images of Christ to. If you stand.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is that great? Um, you need to. Second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the people who voted the January fourteenth meeting, do you want to make that motion? I'm going to agree with the minute, so we can get recording.
Second.
Second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, perfect. For the twenty second.
Thank you, ma'am. Here, I have some questions. And we now have. This is ever, um, this is the final round. I have to sign this. So if you go in, you would use that. I think you do that, it's all after the, um, clown. I'm having to hold up. Next time you do, the first one I have is for the RAS committee. Yeah. I have to be pointed to the RAS committee, council members, there is some issues. There was a lot of issues with this one, and then, and actually, everyone on the RAS committee would be a part of this, so no one's changing their role of service previously. It's one of these things that's serving. And I include James Mann and the United States District, George Miller, James, Paul, John, Pat Wilson, and Paul, this is two, this is three. And we call them themselves. So unless there was a plan, the council may just need to, uh, the RAS committee to send us or the RAS.
I have a question, are the, um, citizens who live in the badge, do they have a specific term of, or are they usually paid with their year, what's, what's the process on that?
Yeah, um, the, the terms on there.
Okay.
And, uh, for some additional information, the code says that there would be two councilmen, it says that you have to have two councilmen who serve. And then for every other council district, there is a system. So there's a seat for all of us here on the dais. And either, um, two of you are on there or there's.
Okay, do we have another, like, motion about what the president?
I'll make a motion to approve your advice, I am the number one, which is.
Second, okay, it's written seconded that we approve the appointments to the RAS committee. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, thank you very much. I have two, the next one is for the RAS committee. And as was discussed last time, we discussed that council member charity plays, council members who serve in the RAS committee. So I have Matt, Tony, and the RAS committee. And council members who are charity, uh, who are ongoing members, access to service from the council.
Second, that's still good.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a motion? That's out of favor, I would accept a motion. Second, those in favor, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The next one is for the airport board, because, um, I could do say for the airport. You know, but it's still not kind of. There is, interested in serving on that board. Just have, you know, airport authority. He is a board of the local agency. Nine members. The captain executive. I want to remind you, you're right, and so, uh, which is. And then between, that adds up to six at that point, and between those six, six of us appoint one county citizen at bar. And then each of our economic development directors, that's a piece of. So we, appointment I have for today is to kind of.
Okay, maybe more. Some of.
Second.
And moving to second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I'll just tell you about the airport one. This is going to be a discussion of the airport board. Had some discussions about potentially expanding that board. Addy and the senior two, I mean, you're also in the rescue. And that's, that's something that the board's going to discuss more. But if that, if that is something that the board would like to, then, hopefully, it's a council, then it's a county. And then definitely, um, so if that's something you'd like to address, you might come back to your board. The next appointment I have is for the planning mission. And this is a reappointment with Nathan Dowes, who served, is second appointment, to a three-year term. Would you approve Nathan Dowes on the planning issue?
Sorry.
Moving to second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Last one I have this evening is for the cash county meeting board. And these are, these are appointments. So I have four members of zone one, Mike Spackman, to be appointing one. And it is four-year term for this one. We appoint you twenty-two, twenty-three, as with all four of the members that we want to. For the next board member zone two, Brett Ferguson, to be appointed. Board member zone three, Aaron Evans, to be appointed. And then advisory member and council leader on the Harrison for.
Please take a break.
Second, what woman is this, I'm sorry to hear. The vegetation.
We, we can go board this.
Oh, second, yes, second.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much. And I'll, I'll have some more next time. We had a, a lot of these to read here, so next time I'll have, like, another stack. But if there are any changes later, I'll make sure to. I can close my report, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, our, our special interest, we have Jordan, the health department.
This is given to each council member. Should have a copy of what's coming out, but it looks like this. Um, I want the public to be able to see it maybe as well. Um, a little small, but it's. I'm here to discuss, um, the interlocal agreement, the structure of an interlocal agreement for the bearer or health department. Allow the bearer or health department to come, become a multi-county united local health department under that agreement. Um, hopefully, you've each had a chance to look at that agreement and review it. I'm just gonna hit on some of the highlights. Uh, the reason I wanted to share this with you is because it kind of highlights what's changed. And what I want to share with you is what hasn't changed is this column right here. Um, right, right here. Really, the structure of the public health department is still intact, the way that it what has been really since nineteen seventy-two. Um, it, through the interlocal agreement, forms the bearer or health department, has a board of health, has a health officer, and has programs underneath that. That's how it functions. Uh, what this interlocal agreement does, and I'm gonna take a little bit of time, hopefully that's okay, to make sure that we get into a little bit of the details. Um, I'm gonna start in the whereas's. Most people swit, uh, kind of glaze over those, but a couple of them are really important. Important. The first one that I want to hit on is the last one on page one of the interlocal agreement. It says, "The counties," meaning rich, bucks elder and cash, "desire to conform, reaffirm, and ratify the creation of the Bear River Health Department as the multi-county local health department, and expand it to be a multi-county united local health department under the Health Authorities Act and the Interlocal Cooperative Act, and hereby memorialize such creation." So it reestablishes the desire of the counties to have the Bear River Health Department, but expand it to be a multi-county health department, or a, a united health department. Um, and so what does that really mean? Uh, the third whereas on page two kind of helps understand that. The county's desire to jointly qualify for and obtain funding for the, from the Utah Department of Health and Human Services for mental health and substance abuse services through Bear River Health Department. Those funds for mental health and substance abuse services are now going to funnel through the Bear River Health Department. And the county's desire to monitor, review, and evaluate the performance of and compliance with all contracts for funding of mental health and substance abuse services through the Bear River, help, through Bear River Health. So we're going to have the broad oversight over those contracts. Um, jumping to one of the definitions that I want to share with you is, in there is behavioral health or behavioral health programs. Um, so in the whereas's, we're talking about mental health and substance abuse. And what we define that at in the interlocal agreement is the integration of substance abuse and mental health programs. That's when we refer to behavioral health, we're talking about moving toward a more integrated model for behavioral health, where we bring substance abuse and mental health together. Prior, we were in charge of substance abuse at the health department, bearer of mental health, had all the funding and programming for the mental health. It's going to be an integration of those funds and those programs to better serve the public. Jumping to, so just wanted to hit on that. The big question is, what does it all mean? In, on page five, under four point fourteen, it talks about the behavioral health programs. Oh, I did want to touch on the fact that this is a fifty-year duration, um, just so that you're all aware. Um, I'll be, be retired by then, so. Um, but the county's grant, the response, under four point fourteen point one, the county's grant the responsibility for continuing, maintaining, and overseeing contracting for behavioral health programs to the department, meaning the Bear River Health Department. The reason I wanted to highlight on that is it's a continuation of what the counties have done, it's just moving that contracting and the maintenance of those contracts to the Bear River Health Department rather than as it has been with each individual county. Um, so under the, the programs on the next page at the very top, the county's authorized the department to develop, oversee, and administer, and monitor all contracts for behavioral health programs on behalf of the counties. Um, and then to, to avoid a lapse in critical government services, uh, and to mitigate circumstances likely to negatively impact public health, safety, and welfare of vulnerable populations, the department shall prior, prioritize county's established contracts. What that means is we are going to basically take the contracts that exist with the counties. We'll tweak them a little bit, but the duration of them will remain the same. By those contracts, I mean the contracts that currently exist with Bear River Mental Health. So it gives explicit direction to us to take those contracts, make some minor changes to them as legal counsel advises, and then move forward with those contracts for that duration. Any questions on that? All right. Um, the, the other thing that I wanted to hit on, um, the, the changes that we can make to those contracts spell out expectations for delivering integrated mental health and substance abuse programs. We needed to be very specific about that because that hasn't been part of those contracts in the past, it hasn't been integrated where it's substance abuse and mental health. So those contracts will include the requirement to provide both services as an integrated provider. Um, the other thing that's really, really important, because this ties directly back to the governing bodies of the county, is in fourteen, or four fourteen point two, it says, "As allowed, under Utah Code, the legislative bodies of the county under this agreement officially establish a local behavioral health advisory council to advise planning, organizing, and operating all behavioral health programs." Um, so that's that purple box that you see over there that's called the Bear River Health Advisory Council. That advisory council is just that, it's to advise the council, or the, the governing bodies of the counties on the development of plans. Um, and it's going to be an integrated plan. Currently, we've, we've got the counties to sign off on a substance abuse plan and a mental health plan. That, just like the services, will come together under one umbrella of a single plan that will come back to the counties. But there will be appointments made, um, to that advisory council by each of the counties for individuals, um, from those counties that have expertise in this area to advise in the development of those plans. So it will be an advisory council appointed by the counties, meant to advise the counties, but also meant to advise, um, a new formed position, which is the Director of Behavioral Health. Um, so they will advise the Director of Behavioral Health and the development of that integrated plan. That integrated plan, and, and quite frankly, we've done a really poor job of seeking the required public input into those plans in the past. What this interlocal agreement allows for and dictates is gaining that public input. So, we will hold a public hearing as part of our Board of Health, where that plan will be presented and the public will have an opportunity in that public meeting to receive that public input. And then, before it ever makes it to any of the county legislative bodies for approval, there'll be a process. If you guys desire it, I'm sure you could have a public input process on your level as well, but we will make sure that at least there is a process before it gets to you all for that public input. Before we make a recommendation that it be accepted. That's something that has been missing, and so we've been very clear on that. Fourteen point... Or four fourteen four three. I just wanna be clear, under this interlocal agreement, the BHAG... So, essentially, the way that works is there's the line between the Director. The Director of Behavioral Health will act as a secretary to that advisory council and receive advice from them on that planning. They will be an employee of the Health Department. They'll report directly to me. But they will oversee all substance abuse and mental health, or what we're calling behavioral health programs in the three counties, and any contracts for those services in our counties, including the oversight for the largest contract, which will be Bear River Mental Health. That's really what changes things. I wanna stop and pause and see if there's any questions there. We have one other highlighted section. Those are the big changes.
Will Bear River Mental Health still have its own governing board and director?
Yeah, so it's a private not-for-profit, so they're required to have a governing board and have that governance structure in place. They will be a separate organization contracted as a provider. Yes, correct. Yeah, so the next... If the county's approved this and Box Elder's reviewed it and approved it, no pressure, I'm not trying to put that out there as pressure. But, the next step, once it's final, that gives me the authorization to hire that Director of Behavioral Health. I don't have the bandwidth or the expertise to do some of this work. And so, we've kinda put it off and hopefully gonna get that position put into place. Hopefully, they will be working with each... I'll work with them and they'll work with each of the counties to start getting this advisory council put in place. But the most important part, I think even before the advisory council, is ensuring that we have the flow of contracts from the state to the Bear River Health Department, so that there's no interruption of services and that we have that contract with our largest provider, which is Bear River Mental Health. So, those are the things I need this individual to come in and get put in place so that July one, which was the MOU that we... Or MOA that we signed with with the three counties, Bear River Mental Health and the Health Department. That's our goal, is July one, we will have contracts in place and there will be no interruption of services to the public. So, after... I think after those two things get put in place, we will come to the counties and say, "We need some advice on who to get appointed to this advisory council." Yeah? Did you wanna speak to it? It's... I think some of it's a nuance of code, right?
Yeah, exactly. So, state code really organizes, sets out the structure for the advisory council. It is... And just to back up just really quick for just a second. Box Elder, Cash County, or Rich County, when we're talking about the counties, we're talking about the counties and specifically the councils or commissions as the local substance abuse authority and the local mental health authority. So, when we're talking about the counties, you are acting in that role as the authority over substance abuse and mental health. And that's outlined in state code. So then, when you come to this advisory council, it's actually for the mental health. Under state code, for mental health, they allow for this advisory board. And it's really for the local mental health authorities. So, for the councils, or the council or the commissions, for Box Elder and Rich, who are receiving this advice. So, I know this chart may not show that exactly, but that's really what's happening, is this advisory council is serving to help. And then, where the counties are creating this entity and establishing that structure, they're allowing for that advisory council to also help the Director, which is another position that is allowed for in state code. And so, that Director is appointed by the council, but through this interlocal agreement, you are essentially allowing the Health Department to run part of that, but then you'll essentially give advice and consent at the end of that. So...
Which Director did you say?
The Director of Behavioral Health. It effectively, it's a... It will be selected or approved by the council, but it's... There's a hiring process that I believe.
Yes, all three.
State code requires, yeah, that the mental health authorities, the local health authorities... So, the way that the interlocal has been written is so that the council will give basically advice and consent. So, really, Jordan's gonna be in his position. Whoever precedes him will do the work to basically hire the individual, make that recommendation up to each... Yeah. Right. Because this is an interlocal entity. And the counties, that's how interlocal entities operate, is councils or commissions or together, where this is a multi-county, you really are still the authorities for mental health and substance abuse. There's gotta be a lot of input from you as the mental health and substance abuse authority. We just... Where the Health Department is created to be able to alleviate all of the administrative work, that makes it so that you can properly function. Still get the deep look that you need by having the Health Department run through that process, but then have that recommendation brought up to you all in the final determination. Exactly.
And it is an advisory council.
Exactly. And through the interlocal agreement, there's a little more authority given from the three counties to allow that advisory authority, if you will, or advisory capability to extend to those within the Health Department. So, there's a fair amount of continuity between the mental health and substance abuse authorities and the actual functioning of the Health Department that's gonna be carrying out everything that you all are providing. Yeah, no, that's... No, so there, if you go into the Interlocal Cooperation Act, it does allow for a fair amount of delegation. And actually, the state provides a fair amount of oversight and direction on how those entities operate. But, it still allows and almost requires the counties that create them or the municipalities, whatever the political subdivision that's creating them, it allows them to, and requires them to maintain a certain amount of oversight. So, for example, in state code, under the Interlocal Cooperation Act, the counties or the political subdivision are supposed to be able to still continue choosing a portion of those who are gonna be on the board of whatever that local entity's gonna be, that interlocal entity's gonna be, thereby showing that there's still a certain amount of control from the counties, because it is an extension of the county. The counties are creating an interlocal entity to help fulfill a function that they themselves may not be able to. And so, they've created this entity to help. And most often, it involves other political subdivisions so that they can... I would have to read the interlocal agreement. I don't have it memorized, so I'd have to look and see what it... But it's in the interlocal agreement, I believe. Do you recall, Jordan?
It says, "Once the rad... Once the governing bodies accept that individual in that position, they become a department employee and function under the policies of the department." So, the answer would be yes. I think one other thing, Executive Zook, is we talked with a couple other counties that have some different governance structures, and the uniqueness of that advisory council is to get at the expertise, specifically of behavioral health. And my concern, even if you could, we talked to Summit County. They're the closest one to kinda having some structure like this, and they opted to have a separate advisory council because it allows for more in-depth expertise. And when you look at like the Board of Health, because it is a governance board, requires for us to have those elected leaders on there that may not necessarily come with that expertise. And so, the advisory council being able to get more expert and offer advice to governing boards that can make decisions was kinda where the interlocal ended up. To speak to the reason it looks un-unified, my anticipation is that they will be very much unified. I specifically have it siloed to demonstrate how it looks different. But those programs will essentially become public health programs that get contracted out. I don't look at it too much different than this plan will be similar to our Community Health Improvement Plan. Like, how are we going to address issues around behavioral health? And hopefully, those, even the plans that we currently have in public health that already identify mental health as a priority will now be rolled up into more comprehensive plans with better integration. So, I specifically illustrated it in a silo, so you could see what was different and what was staying the same.
I'd have to look at that. I'm not prepared to answer on that. I would have to look at the code specifically. I know we've had discussions, you and I, on similar issues as far as assigning, and so I'd have to look at the health... So, Title twenty-six A talks about the Public Health Department. So, I haven't actually looked at what those requirements are recently, to be able to recall that from memory, but I'll look at that title. Yeah, and we can look at that, absolutely.
The only other thing that I had that is, I wanted to highlight is it does require an annual review by myself and the county attorney to ensure... One of the issues that got us to where we're at is we had interlocal agreements that weren't reviewed regularly and were not maintained. So, it does explicitly put in there that an annual review will take place by the Health Officer and the County Attorney. Yeah. So, how would you envision that, like just a regular review with the legislative bodies of the counties? Because if the agreement's still good, it wouldn't necessarily require a vote? Or are you wanting...
I think that would be a simple... I think that would be a simple, just adding to that, annual review and update to the mental health and multiple substance abuse authorities. So that would be really easy to do, and something I can maybe add to the system.
I mean, you suggested that you could, and you were...
This is a fifty year, I was trying to figure something like that. We had contracts, none of us were going to cancel them, so this one needs to be passed on as we go through. So I was...
I guess I'm suggesting that you pass it.
Well, even if it says the process, I was about to kind of ask you if you can get that together with that.
I have a couple of questions. So in five point eight, it talks about an auditor. And there was a, it looked like there was a motion to either potentially hire an independent auditor, or designate who the auditor is. Could that be our current auditor, Matt Bunk, who would be in charge of...
That'd be up to the counties. But currently, the way it functions is we hire out that for them to do audits on all of our federal contracts and everything like that. That independent audit does roll up into the county audit. So I don't know if that's something that you'd want to assign to them, but...
Yeah, I just wondered, would that mean in your full-time position, if that would be your... And I guess that leads into the next question, is how, if at all, does this affect the funding and budget?
The funding and budget of... I think that's, the one thing that it creates is it creates a position that wasn't there. And so we will have to figure out how to fund that position. But as of right now, that's the only anticipation of how it would impact that. Quite honestly, I don't have a lot of insight right now into the funding that's coming to their mental health, so I don't know that I can speak entirely to that. But there will be a small decrease for the, for maintaining that contractual oversight. Just let it last twelve, that's when I hit thirty.
I mean, it's, I think the fifty year mark is in there, but there's going to be legislative action, there could be... Classes of counties, you know, everything's going to be changed, where we...
I've been a director of a public health department in the state of Utah for ten years, and this is my third time going through an interlocal agreement. So I agree. I think there's things, there's things that get changed in laws, there's things that get changed in the counties, and how we figure out how to do things and improve things. So I agree.
I think this will help us function best we can right now. And they'll be, they're not used to moving, you know, as we want to be going, doing what, we just, we have to add, we have to leave. I think your diagrams, I think you set up pretty sound here.
By resolution.
Yes. So the resolution, there is a resolution prepared in case you all wanted to, because it would be the first reviewing. But that's set for a later point in the meeting, I believe, under the pending resolutions.
So my only question to Jerris out of procedure, just so we're, because if we make, if we make a change, I do need to take that change back to Box Elder County, make sure that they're okay with it. So would they do the resolution now, or wait till the change? So we can get the change and get it back in front of you at another time. I had a much shorter presentation.
You did two weeks then.
Sure, yeah.
Madam Chair, Andrew needs to make an announcement about your portion of this.
Oh, yes. So apparently, the only microphone working in the chamber right now is the one in front of me. And despite texting everyone that I can to fix it, it can't be fixed anyway. An audio recording will be made available to the public. So just for all those who are listening right now, one will be made available on the county's website. Yes, but a separate audio recording will be made available on the county's website. Yes. There have been some people saying it's coming in very faint. So some of you, yes, others no. New AV system. Anyway, that's all.
All right.
It's past five thirty, so we have our public hearings. First one, three quarters, twenty five minutes, zero one, Carson's one, I feel like.
Angie's under request, planning manager with Department of Development Services. This first rezone tonight is for four parcels that are just north of the Smithfield boundary on the east side of Highway ninety-one. It's a request to approve the mineral extraction and excavation overlay zone to fifty-three point eight-six acres that are currently in the agricultural A-ten zone. The four parcels that are included in this request are owned by Smithfield City and Jack Parsons Companies. They've historically been used as access points and mineral extraction uses. So a rezone to add this overlay will help to bring them back into conformance with current standards for mineral extraction sites. Public hearing was held by the Planning Commission, December fifth, and it was recommended that the county council approve the rezone based on the location is compatible with the purpose of the mineral extraction overlay zone. The subject properties are historic gravel extraction sites. And the sand and gravel resource potential map that we have on file shows that this isn't an area with a high resource potential. Smithfield is in favor of the rezone, obviously if they want to be applicant. But yeah, that vote with a five to zero recommendation for approval from the planning commission.
We have a question, Matt, in your public comments, you want your public to like to speed to this issue?
Hi.
This next public hearing, the Rick Chaplin rezone, is two parcels that are located just west of Smithfield, about twelve hundred west and sixty-two hundred north. It's a request to rezone twenty-nine and a half acres from the A-ten agricultural zone to the rural two zone. If the rezone request were approved, the maximum number of potential lots would be fourteen, whereas the current zoning only allows three. Actually, it probably only allows two, twenty-one point five. It's surrounded by primarily used for ag and residential. There are other RE2 zones located near there, but they are adjacent to the Smithfield City boundary and located within the Smithfield's future annexation boundaries. These properties do not share boundary with Smithfield and are not located within their future annexation area. The county's future land use map, which is adopted as part of the general plan, identifies this area as agricultural and ranching with preferred land uses of agriculture, ranching, rural residential uses at densities of less than one unit per ten acres, and discourages uses at greater than one per ten. So the RE2 would allow one lot for every two acres. We did receive four public written comments prior to the planning commission public hearing, which were included in the staff report. They were all opposed. The public hearing was held December fifth, planning commission. There was quite a turnout, with most of the public commenting they were not in favor of the rezone, generally due to water concerns and setting a precedent for rezones in the area. We did receive a comment after planning commission in support of the rezone. And just clarifying that their opinion differs from comments made by family members opposed. But just to let you know, all public comments are part of the public record. So that will be included, even though we're not able to modify minutes or anything after the public comment requested. So based on the findings of facts and the comments from the public hearing, the planning commission recommended that the county council deny the rezone request due to the fact that the rezone is not, the subject property is not consistent with the Cache County general plan future land use map. And the nearest RE2 zones are immediately adjacent to municipal boundaries. And again, the subject property does not share boundary. The recommendation for denial was five to zero, planning commission.
My name's Rick Chaplin. I'm the applicant. I think, I mean, one of the reasons that I'd like to move forward with this is just that with the location of the Smithfield Temple, I think that area is going to have demand for change. And I think that the two-acre lot still keeps it relatively open. And we have a really good track record of doing high-quality developments throughout the valley and have for over thirty years. They're definitely looked to as some of the nicest ones that are around in the valley. And that's what we would do there if it were approved. And I, I mean, maybe it's not the right time, but I think that area is going to change due to the fact of the temple being located there. So, that's all. Thank you.
Who else like to speak to that?
Hi. Yes. I try to be efficient, yes. And this one I'll probably be even quicker on, because I know our interim director wants to introduce this, and the applicant may have to make his day. And you've already heard about this during the workshop a couple weeks ago. But this is the Powder Mountain rezone. It's a request to rezone a little over sixteen hundred acres from the forest recreation FR forty zone to the resort recreation zone. The public hearing was held. We received no public comment. The planning commission voted four to zero to recommend, to have the county council recommend approval based on the location of the subject properties to be rezoned are compatible with the purpose of the resort recreation zone. The rezone is consistent with the general plan, and it's going to be part of a larger area that's already zoned RR that's immediately adjacent to the south of this property. And this rezone will allow these parcels to be included in the upcoming master plan for Powder Mountain to help with their density equivalence and different use types of what these proposals are part of. And then, yes, as I mentioned, our interim director, Sir Anderson, wanted to have a moment.
Evening, everybody. I've got what from our code is a famous flowchart that has to do with the resort recreation zone process. And really, I just wanted to share this because what is going on tonight is really the first step in this process. And so basically, any necessary results. As you know, we have various zones throughout the county for development. And much of this area, like many of parts of our county, are already zoned as FR forty. There are parts in this area that are already zoned as recreation. And so this rezone tonight is merely the first step to bring some of those that were in FR forty, but that are planned to be part of the Powder Mountain proposal, the master plan, into the recreation zone. Brooke and Powder Mountain representatives will have much more to say about that. But I just wanted to kind of present you and show you that this is really just the first step in a longer process that we're going to need to be grappling with as a county and as willing participants, obviously, Powder Mountain. Brooke and her team are excellent professionals, and they know what they're doing. And we're going to benefit quite a deal from their expertise. But we also have a lot of responsibility ourselves to make sure that we get the review of the assuming impending master plan correct. And that's going to include, as we've come to kind of generally a big conclusion recently, that we need to decide what approving a master plan actually means. Because after the master plan process, that's a one-time approval process unless future amendments are needed to be made. Then after that, when they come into, they enter the other step, which is doing, getting all of the things that were in the master plan that we agreed to not be approved in the master plan, then they come before the county. So kind of like the smaller steps of that development. And so without further ado, I think if it's okay, we'll have our applicant come up, if that's okay. Or if that's if now's when you want them to give their presentation.
We're doing public comment right now.
Right. And so, great. And so my point is, there's my two cents.
Make sense as part of public comment.
Right. And you won't...
But is this part of your presentation?
No, not really. Like, we just agreed that, I just thought of this today, which is why, later in the day, which is why I just handed it out instead of including it as some sort of scan. Not everything on this flowchart actually is accurate, updated according to state code. So focus on that first box, and then we'll come back and explain how that is the case at another date.
Okay, now we'll look with a couple of comments.
We have a presentation for you. Thank you for putting us on the agenda tonight and taking time with us regarding rezone. I'm Brooke Hans. You've seen me before. I'm Chief Development and Construction Officer for Powder Mountain. And we will get started, because I'm sure you're curious, after hearing that introduction, why we're even rezoning. Because the majority of the property, three thousand five hundred and eighty acres, is already rezoned. And it already exists, and it's already operational as a resort. And that happened back in two thousand one and two thousand and two, when that occurred. And so the sixteen hundred and twenty approximate acres is a relatively new addition in terms of ownership, but not in terms of operation. And so winter recreation and summer recreation has occurred on this adjacent property for many years. However, when we came to the county this spring, and we sat down with staff, and we looked at this conundrum of now a larger ownership of fifty-two hundred acres, it was, okay, what's the best way to proceed with applications? Because there's more than one way to do this. We don't necessarily have to rezone, because as you're probably all aware, your existing two resorts, winter recreation resorts in Cache County are FR forty. So they actually are operational, do all the things that ski resorts have to do under that zoning. So why would we go through that extra step, as the deputy director just indicated to you, and add, you know, more things to your agenda, by having this additional portion rezoned to match? Well, it does make good planning sense. And so it's, I have four great points that are going to come up on the screen in a second. And the first one is that it, not only did staff think that that was the right idea and give us that direction, but it does make sense when the, all of the property in the area, the fifty-two hundred plus acres, like I mentioned, if you want to go just to the first slide, that would be great, that says why rezone, actually, right there. Then the, why would you not have all of that ownership under one plan and in one conversation? And come to you and then have follow-up meetings and different types of permissions that would go to planning commission or council at the appropriate time? So it made a lot of sense under the original tent, if anyone took time to read the actual RR zone, the ongoing planning and what makes sense in the world of planning efforts. And then also to have that zoning in the master plan match. So we agreed, and that's why we came in and applied for the rezone for the land, that's the sixteen hundred and twenty acres, which is the focus of tonight. So if you want to go to the next slide. So if you read the zoning purposes, this is... So if you read the zoning purposes, this is copied and pasted right out of your zoning code, they're actually relatively similar in terms of some of the things that those zones are trying to accomplish. However, resort recreation takes it that one step further and it specifically talks about like the commercial use related to recreation, but also it adds some nice language, I think, about protecting the county's environment and regulating and controlling development, which is not part of the FR40. If you'd like to go to the next slide. So specifically, what is different in the zones? And these are copied and pasted also directly from your use chart in the county ordinance. So the blue things that are highlighted are the things that are allowed in RR that are not identified in FR40. So these are things that are slightly more permissive, or permissive depending, you can see, there's very few Ps, but then there are Cs, which are conditional uses, or CCs, which are having, require a zoning clearance. However, there also are three things, if you see the green highlighted box, that are allowed in the FR40, that makes sense, that are not allowed in the RR zone. So overall, you can get a really clear kind of distinction of why the RR zone was created. And it speaks to that, what I was talking about, slightly more residential uses, some multifamily, some commercial, and identifying a little bit more what types of recreation should be occurring within that zone. Next. So we visited this last time, but I think it's always good to, a good reminder of how far in the very south tip of the county it is. And then, on the right-hand side of this slide, you can see the sixteen hundred and twenty acres in the vibrant green and how adjacent, slash, it touches the already brown area of the thirty-five hundred plus acres that's zoned RR. So that's the brown area to the left. Next slide. And here it is in its entirety. So you can see, again, the area that's just shown as an ortho picture, that's Weber County. And so you're at the very south tip of Cache County and the adjacency of the two areas, the current RR in brown and the requested rezon area in green. If we go to the next slide. So, one of the questions that came up a couple of weeks ago when we were here and we were talking about the master plan, I'd like to revisit. And that is regarding, how does the master plan uses apply to the rezon area? So, the master plan developed areas, so the places where you're going to see the more intense residential or commercial use are those lightly kind of orange pieces that are labeled A, B, C, D, E, F. And you can see associated roads with that. Now, the only portion therefore, within the rezon area that we're requesting, is the approximate ninety-five acres in, shown in red. That's where that more intense development would be located. The recreation use, of course, is intended, just as it is right now, over the entire green area and including some of the red area as well. But the intense uses, the residential uses, are limited to the red zone, which is ninety-five acres. So less than six percent of the entire request of what we have. Slide to the next. If we were to proceed under FR40, and you were to look at a forty acre lot size, you could have, I think it's showing here, is forty-five, different single-family residences. Of course, in the FR40, if you referred back to that first slide I had, those have to be seasonal cabins, but we would meet that standard because these homes are intended to be second homes. So, the amount of area that would then be utilized, and we did study this so that this is accurate, to meet the standard of on less than thirty percent slopes and to have the minimum amount of acreage and to have the certain characteristics in terms of setbacks and et cetera are represented on this slide. And so, instead of condensing all of that intense development to the ninety-five acres, you instead have that basically spread out over the entire sixteen hundred acres because that's what the code requires. It's not like, this is not the preferred method in design, and that's why we're not asking for this. But this is what, if it remains under FR40, the code allows you to do. So if we go to the next. So, one of the things that is typical when you're looking at rezones is, how does this comply and comport to the general plan? And these four pieces of information are taken from the general plan language and we've identified that they are, in fact, in alignment with the plan that we have. And so, outdoor recreation and tourism is a preferred land use in the 2023 general plan for this area and for this rezon. Outdoor recreation has already been occurring on the site for years and the rezon promotes the other preferred land uses, the general plan to be implemented. It does, number three, prevents the sprawl of seasonal cabins, which luckily, I would just, you know, illustrated in the previous slide. And then, four, secondary land use, this is a specific, this again is copied and pasted from your general plan, cluster subdivisions, resorts, and recreation businesses are allowed within the RR zone and proposed within the current master plan. So if we go to the last, or one of the last slides, again, we have all three of the images placed in one location for you on this, representing in the center, the master plan, and I know that's very small, but it is a large landmass. On the right, you can see the sixteen hundred and twenty acres in the green. And on the left, you can see how the master plan impacts that acreage. So, the timeline that we're on, we're, again, in the middle of that slide at the rezon public hearing. We are looking to be able to move forward with a lift on this particular rezon area this spring. And so that's, as you can see, a six-twenty-five deadline that we're trying to meet. If the rezon doesn't receive a positive approval tonight from the council, there are options for us. We could proceed under existing zoning, because it is FR40 and this use is allowed, with a conditional use permit, so that we could proceed in the, in this timeframe and achieve that. And if we do receive a positive approval, there still needs to be another step before we could even apply for a building permit. And that's even outside of the master plan, which is running concurrent, but that would be a development agreement specific to that lift because in order to meet that timeline, we'd want to come to you and say, here's, here's how this lift works and here's how it's shown in the master plan, this is how we would proceed. In addition, separate from the rezon, we do, you've seen our presentation, high-level overview of the master plan, that's in front of the Planning Commission for their review and approval. And because that is a concurrent process, at least at this point, as of tonight, with some other things that are going on, including the rezon, that's why I wanted to mention the CUP and the development agreement. So, in conclusion, we got to actually hear you consider two rezones prior to ours. But we also did some research and looked up historically what it takes in Cache County to get a rezon approved. And so, these are four pieces of information that identify the findings that could be made to say, these are the standards by which this zone actually meets the standard of the code, of the Cache County code. And this is why the approval, the Planning Commission was able to give a positive recommendation. So first, the location of the subject property to be rezoned is compatible with the purpose of the RR zone. And I think that one, when you review the language of the RR zone is really obvious because back in two thousand and one, when I was involved with the county at that time, who was in the people writing the zone, it was actually conceived to help make sure that this project came into life in a certain way and that the county had controls over it. Number two, the site has a history of outdoor recreation and resort use, obviously, accurate. Number three, the subject property has year-round road access solely from Weber County within land already zoned RR. And so that is the continued access that we would utilize to access this rezon, and that's not changing. And number four, the proposed rezon is congruent with the Cache County general plan and specifically those two items that I reviewed on the general plan slide. So, happy, happily take any questions you might have about our process and about the rezon.
Other sixteen hundred acres, if I look at the northern tip of this, it's very much surrounded by what is forest FR40, based on what I'm looking at. So are you wanting to rezon everything just to the RR because that's what you have total of your ownership? Does that make sense? For instance, what's going on in the very tip of this park as you go up there, it's surrounded by FR40 up in there. What's going on that that needs to be resort recreating?
So, what does it need to be related to resort recreation? To your point, the uses right there are, I dive in closer, but I'm pretty sure it's just recreation-based. And so it's related to access to the ski resort and to our winter operations from the south, from the additional dark vibrant green area. So it's simply just a control mechanism of bringing in all the land under one plan and under one zone. And we, you know, the way that the code is written, the master plan CUP is only supposed to apply to land that's rezoned to RR. That's why it's all included. No other reason. I don't think there's a specific use there at all that isn't already allowed under FR40. Thank you.
He was, to make it. So the subject is, I see the board. So, main, main purpose for the item on the agenda is to just cover the overview of the Royal County grant and the firemen's bills. Purpose for the Royal County grant is to empower rural counties and governments and members that own the economic development opportunities and business improvement, development and expansion, workforce training, development, and a lot of things that brands are helping towards. Also, the rural counties must have and maintain a functioning board, must have a reporting for our citizens. And then, part of this, there is some question as to accept or no, how would the board get payments? Do you think the board would be, as the county council, have to accept the payments to the, to these terms, to the risk part and to have it's part? So if you cover all the basis bases around the appointment, I'm going to suggest the names of the chair of the senior board and then the executive would also recommend those names to be appointed. If it covers all the legal bases for the appointments and how we can have it on the board for the maximum. How and who makes the decisions? Chair of this board can make the one. Cover all bases, all bases. Suggest the names. I don't know the names. So, that being accepted, it's involved in the question, suggest or recommend the three, the three appointing line card. As the board has just developed, previously, I had a role in that. And now he has, it's actually been moved on and discussed. He's involved in, he actually, he was, he was basically happy to stay on to others that want to change direction and talk with the board and actually to save on these institutional laws that he has on the subjects, particularly his review, which right on, the area of the community. And then, with the fresh perspective, he now has him involved. He actually, he agreed, and so, the Ryan Harrow, his man, I think he's worked, he has turned this up and, and now, and Jamie Andrews, the current chair of the Cache Chamber, returns his fire and has been requested, our board's on this board. And then, we will be presenting the board to propose that Daryl Simmons from the greater Smithville area chamber would be helping to do that position.
Daryl Simmons, he's came in, he's started talking, and he's looking at the county public strategic plans, which boards, and so we've got a little bit of a, a question about the economic advisory board. We've got the chairman of the advisory board here, and we don't know whether it's his role or the executive's role. I think they're both in agreement, but I don't know if that's something that you have even looked at or, I don't want to put you on the spot.
I'm not sure who created that kind of advisory board, I'm not sure if it's a county function or not.
Each county is supposed to have one if they want. It's connected to the world.
Yeah, so there might be some suspicion that they're state-created, and I know they're sometimes state-created, but how are you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I can answer that. It's, members are appointed by the county.
Does anyone have a point about some of those things, do you want to talk about those and bring them back together next week, their next meeting? Someone important to see on that?
On the air on the board.
In other words, we cover each.
Seven, seven voting.
Cover the demographic areas of the county.
Yes, two, two council members, so it's sort of.
Terms are suspended.
Cycle. I would take this time out, I brought that up just to take Sam for a second. And then, yeah, Sean Mill is the staff for this, and he's the, 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 the representative for the, Alexender, and, 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 and,
Just these three term, so it's two year term.
Okay. If we move to second, do we have a discussion, do we have a discussion about that? If we move to second, do we have to say or say hi?
Hi.
Any opposed to make? Here's the man.
Okay. As it's me, there is additional information if you want to be curious about the CEO Board.
All right, let's move on to pending action. Oh, thanks, Laura.
Oh, that was awesome.
I'm doing business. Hey, um, so eight, eight, we're gonna, um, have the staker, staker person to notice that goes to plan to rezone. Would Zandry be that guy? So if anybody has any questions, yeah, Angie, about that, before we discuss the board on it. This one was recommended five to zero from, uh, SW. That's probably from the planning and the information, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It's funny, this, this area has always been that, even back to Paul Yale, Grant Johnson, you know, Cache Townies.
Yeah, so they're all considered legal non-conforming. Uh, staker persons came in because they wanted to expand and do some additional work, which requires them to amend the CUP. Um, and currently, um, to expand or to even start a new gravel pit, you have to be in that M E overlay zone. So that's why they came in to get that overlay approved first, and then they'll come back with a conditional use in their application.
They can do it in their section.
Yeah, I think it's more of maybe a crushing operation.
Yeah, it's helped them, kind of what they got points, uh, there, they probably haven't been able to.
In the notes, I saw that the CEO was in favor, I don't know if that was mentioned.
Yeah, they also own two of the persons, they're part of the application.
Make a motion on orders twenty twenty-five dash zero two, the state person north of North Smithville, that is, uh, we approved all of it, trying to push a reputation.
If we move to second, those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Any, um, opposed? Yeah. Okay, if you'd love to be, the, 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 twenty twenty-five dash zero two, um, anyone have any questions regarding about that when she presented it earlier?
I'd make a motion on orders twenty twenty-five dash two, follow the recommendation, fighting situation on the great camp for rezone.
Hi.
If we move to second, any discussion?
At the end of the plan, it's going to be on that discussion. I would have thought that they did.
Okay, those who are in favor of this motion, say hi.
Hi.
All right, this, um, orders twenty twenty-five dash zero three, are now rezoned. Any questions about that and discuss it?
I guess many of us have been down here to see what's going on over there. We just talked about this massive.
Alco found them.
I'm just saying, because I understand where we're headed, but I have a question on that north part. Of our forty, but I understand where this is headed, so I'm just wondering if you can, if it's a detriment or whatever. Down this road, I think this council needs to be very.
I haven't been there, no. I haven't been there, but my, my, uh, is, is land that they own, they're all in, you know, and, um, if we, if we're getting ready to, um, look at the master plan, if you want it done, it would just make sense to include all of their property in the zone so that it can be dealt with in one set of, like, if it's still zoned differently, when you do that master plan, it's going to open the door to two separate, separate sets of requirements possibly, because they'll be in different zones. And so that, that was the thought that I had, I don't know if you feel a little bit about that, but it just seems like it's weird, compared to the master plan, that it just makes sense to have it all in the same zone, sort of be dealt with and, um, well, there you go.
I understand that, I'm just saying that, uh, for those people who serve on the zoning commission, they, um, make sure so they're on the seat of the secretary. Did you know?
Did they, and they were told.
If you agree with Norman broadly speaking, I think there are times when there are these reasons that could affect the long-term future. And sometimes to the old door, we back it up, well, we're moving the whole thing, but we're not really going to do that. And then later, you kind of do choose, but I, I think there's value in bringing that up. In this case, if there is a concern about it, I'd love to discuss the specific concern of if it does change zones, what would be the concern about happening in that, that the term protects it? If we can talk specifics there, then I'd love to discuss that more, but I personally don't have any concerns.
What are any? There's only there that nice?
There's actually five, if I recall correctly. Commissioner Christiansen, though, had to leave early, and I know that, you know, he, he has reservations, um, certainly, and I think, um, pro- probably just stemming from, you know, not having all of the information, uh, upfront, uh, maybe to help him make a decision. If, if he were still there, it might not have been, you know, a bad question. I, I can say that the four of us that were there and that voted for it, pretty had it.
Um, do you have any stuff to make, or is it, is it, is it, is it, is it? Was it trying to make it cut down? Well, it should, it should be, uh, the initial proposal, that this is kind of trying to discuss it, they're, 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 they're. Yeah, yeah.
They're all, they're all initial, weren't they?
Yeah, they're all initial. Maybe we can go and, and suspend the rule. Well, if you two, and we vote on them, but I think at a point of view, we should probably go back and.
They were initially, um, not on, on the agenda at all, so we're going to get revised with Andrew's help and.
Last meeting, we, that, uh, so, so, probably, yeah, we, we never, yeah, so. Okay, so, Jeter, we need to, so those should have been, the, the.
What we make a motion can just go, can just go, motion, right?
We didn't make the motion on.
I did.
Stager person?
I just said the rules on orders twenty twenty-five dash zero one.
That one still stands? We made the motion on.
I think the first one.
Okay, second, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so both of those show, okay, so this is our initial, yeah, so we could, I mean, this is an initial, so if we want to.
You could motion to amend the agenda, just put it under there for clarity's sake.
Second. If we move to second, if we amend the agenda and put, um, orders twenty twenty-five dash zero three into the initial proposal, so, 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 all of you, say hi.
Hi.
All right, so that's procedural, that is, there now, you guys want to keep discussing that, you want to, um, agree on all of it? You guys can change directions, call it, or, all those proposals. Like, I don't, I don't know if I really feel like two more weeks, I'm not going to make it up there for the weekend, I mean, unless I get, so that's a joke.
I do represent a constituent who would like to have it now be considered if they add it back on the IND pass.
I mean, I, I don't know, but I understand the intent of why, uh, staff recommended that they proceed forward this way, so. I'm deciding, um, for, but I understand there's, uh, other council members that would like to take it from the top. There's no motion on that, and it is, um, like, word.
Tickle.
Yes, uh, so, uh, I actually, can I just say something real quick? Jerus actually just told me that this needs to be, we talked about this last meeting, but this just needs to be in resolution format. It's a procedural thing, there's no substance change. Jerus, if you still wanna speak on that though.
Yeah, there was no, uh, resolution ordinance to pass the last time. However, if we could postpone us two weeks because there is within the interlocal agreement itself, something that conflicts with state code, and that would be the appointment of the board members, so that needs to be rectified and changed. So if, if you could give me two weeks, I'll have that changed made, I can present that to you at the next council meeting, and then we could pass it as a resolution.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the council and county executive. My name is Brandon Bell, I've met a few of you, but not all of you. I'm currently, uh, fortunate enough to serve as the countywide planner for Cache County. And, uh, as part of that, currently, um, one of the responsibilities that, uh, I am overseeing relates to, uh, open space, um, applications. So tonight, um, I just wanted to share some, uh, information with you relating to, uh, uh, the Silva Farm, uh, application that's been submitted. It's been approved or recommended for approval by the, uh, COZAC committee. Um, and I'm happy to give you a traditional staff report on that with, um, a highlight of, of some of the attributes of the property and the recommendations that have been made by, uh, COZAC. Uh, let's see if we can get this up onto the screen. Images will load, it will be good to go. So this is, uh, located in, uh, Trenton, um, and it's, uh, at about nine-ten south and, uh, eight-hundred east. Um, the, what's proposed is to preserve about a hundred and thirty acres of property and, um, sorry, just one second. So there's a hundred and fifty total, around fifty-five acres that are part of the property in total. Uh, the, um, the applicant would like to, uh, keep about twenty to twenty-five acres in residential use. You'll see that along the west side of the property, there are, uh, four or five, uh, properties that are actually, um, four or five residential homes that are, uh, under use for that. And so, sorry. So, um, they, they're, they're located here, you can see with the mouse that there's four or five, uh, homes that are currently, um, present. Uh, there are, and the, and the applicant would like to keep twenty to twenty-five of those acres to allow that to be used. Um, the, uh, the criteria for review of open space applications include protect scenic vistas, preserve open lands near valley gateways, maintain agriculture, maintain waterways, maintain wildlife habitat, allow public access, and, and then, uh, other distinguishing factors. There's no major highways that are near this property. Um, the, uh, their aver- average daily traffic counts of nine-seventy and six-hundred near the, um, on the borders of the property. There's, um, it's, and it's near, it's not near any of the traditional valley gateways. Um, uh, that has been discussed by COZAC as, as, um, having the extra consideration. Um, it's about five miles from the Idaho border. Uh, the Utah Department of Agriculture and Food, we've been in contact with them relating to this application, and they've indicated that as agricultural properties go, this is an incredibly well put-together farming, uh, operation. Um, they, uh, there's a new pivot that's in place, and the property is currently agriculturally productive and has been laser leveled. Um, and so it's also designated as prime farmland on the NRCS web soil survey, um, and has, uh, been, uh, presented as a great example of a viable farm operation. Uh, it qualifies as, uh, farmland of local importance as well as, uh, portioned as farmland of statewide importance. So, um, staff in these applications, I typically try to reach out to the mayors, uh, for applications. Uh, we did that with the mayor of Trenton. Uh, it was noted in that conversation that culinary water is a very big issue, uh, for Trenton City. As a result of that, there's extremely limited water for development. They are, um, approving very limited amount of development applications. And so there is, uh, a limit already on the amount of development that would likely to be occur on this property. Um, so, you know, affecting the, the consideration for whether it should be conserved or not, um, due to that, uh, culinary water, uh, limit. And, let's see, I'm gonna pull this other, um, screen over here for a minute, so you can see this. This is an aerial view of the property, um, from one angle, and. I'll give you some more while these are up. We have a few more of these, um, shots. We've, we've been, uh, very fortunate with Justin Clausen, um, and his agricultural, uh, extension agent. Uh, this is another shot, um, of the property, and then you can see right here, this is the main home on the property, and then along this western border, there are about four other homes. Um, and he's, he has a drone that he's used to get these photos for us, so that's been very helpful in considering these applications. Um, and these are some more shots of it. This is, uh, I believe just to the east of the property, um, and then, so, um. The, the, I'll say that the main, um, thrust of this application as considered by COZAC is that, uh, that they felt that the primary value of the property related to, for conservation, related to agriculture. Um, I will, they, the property scored forty-two point six out of a possible one-hundred that, within their framework for scoring. Um, and it scored high in the preserves agriculture, um, and then did fair in the maintains public access. Did not have a sky, uh, score as high in the other four categories. Uh, and so, uh, I'll talk a little bit more about that in just one moment relating to the re- recommendation that they made. Um, on these other categories relating to maintains wildlife habitat, there is no significant wildlife habitat shown on the properties. I mean, it's not within the wildlife urban interface, however, there is the Bay River to the east that, um, at the east of the property, it connects sort of right to the edge of the property, uh, in one point. It's sort of like a little wetland segue that comes off of the river. Uh, and then, and so there's, that, that likely serves as a pretty rich wildlife habitat, um, even though it's not directly on the property. Uh, there's not an official trails plan that staff's aware of for Trenton City. Um, and, but with regards to from the county perspective, there is an rural on-street trail on eight-hundred east, and, uh, that, the county trails master plan is currently beginning to be updated, so adjustments may occur to that, uh, plan. But currently, it does show as a rural on-street trail, the nature of the trail or the location may potentially change that are proposed. The, the main distinguishing factor is that it's, uh, farmland of local, uh, or s- and statewide importance. Um, and then with regards to partnering organizations, um, UDAF has been working with the applicant. Um, they've also been sort of shepherding the applicant through the process with NRCS Conservation Program, uh, for application for funding there. Um, and then, uh, the, also the state, um, funded Leroy McAllister Working Farm and Ranch Fund. Uh, UDAF would be the entity that, uh, holds, that's Utah Department of Agriculture and Food would hold the easements anticipated. Um, I did reach out to the applicant, he was planning on attending tonight, he's not, however, here. Um, I spoke with him, uh, before the meeting, and he said he's, he's dealing with some illness and didn't want, felt like he might be contagious and didn't wanna spread that, so he asked that, he was, you know, fine with it continuing to be considered tonight, and, um, a decision would be made if that's, uh, what you decide. Um, and then the, oh, the, um, we also have our COZAC Chair, Chris Sands, uh, present, who can speak to any more details with regards to COZAC's views on the application. Uh, what COZAC recommended was, um, due to the forty-two point six score, um, and that primarily, the primary strength of the application was viewed as ap- uh, agriculture, uh, was that they, um, recommended that it be funded at a ten percent funding level, um, by the, uh, county from the open space, uh, bond funds, and, um, that was their main recommendation. Let's see if I have any other comments. I think that covers, um, most of my comments with, I guess, one exception, which is the way that the current resolution, should you choose to, uh, adopt it reads, just so you're aware, um, is that it says, uh, that it's at ten percent, that it moved to around two, uh, application at ten percent or another percentage that the council, uh, decides being at a later point, if there's additional information or you have a different, you know, come to, to a different conclusion. That was, we felt that that was the best way to write the resolution to, um, provide it be a little open-ended and not knowing what, what your thoughts and decisions would be on this, at this time. But, um, happy to take any questions or, um, this is the scoring up here, uh, that's showing on your screen currently, but happy to take any questions that you might have for me.
Sure.
I'm happy to see agricultural ground being used on this, but it seems like there's two differences here. Staff report talks about a trail, but on his application, he says no to being of the county.
Okay, um, so he indicated, he indicated differently in, in the meetings with COZAC, and said he would be open to a trail, uh, on the east side, and then I believe on the north side as well as, um, potentially one through, uh, a couple of verses. Yeah, okay, thank you. Uh, that was apparently an error on my part. I don't recall a specific, uh, discussion related to the amount of development pressure. Um, it does, your question does tie back into the comments that were made by Trenton's mayor, um, that there is not as high a development pressure on this property, um, not necessarily due to, uh, demand if it were, you know, were able to be met, but in this case, there's just that additional restriction of the water supply in Trenton. That's a big issue that they're working to resolve, and they have debt that they're working to pay off in a number of factors. And so, um, I don't, Chris, if he has a different memory, can, can speak to that about development pressure. But I do know that, um, again, they have been working with Jeremy Christensen at the Department of Agriculture and Food, and, and he is working to, um, allow their application to be considered for, uh, the, um, Leroy Ray McAllister fund for that. And so, um, he, you know, th- they did note that for this related reason of it being primarily an agriculture property, that the funding should probably be lower, and that was reflected specifically in the motion.
Yeah, yeah, happy to, Chris Sands, uh, Chair of the COZAC, and, and just to respond to a couple of the comments made. I do think, e- even though it may not have been overtly stated during the meeting, I do think COZAC was, you know, the, the, the distance and the lack of pressure was part of the reason, I would say, that some of the commissioners felt like limiting, you know, the percent, uh, that the county contribution would be, and so that was the ten percent. You'll, you'll see, uh, in the record, I voted against it because I didn't like the idea of limiting in the first round. I really wanted, um, you know, to, that, that to be decided in the second round. But, um, other members felt more strongly about it, and, and so that's the recommendation that came before us. Um, it was stated by the applicant, um, I don't remember if it was in a meeting or when we went and visited onsite, but he, he's been approached by developers already to, to purchase his property. And so even though this is in a rural part of the county, there is interest out there in, in new subdivision type of development, despite, uh, the potential restrictions for providing services and that sort of thing. In the meeting, uh, UDAF staff did come and bring and share with us some of that financial information. It wasn't part of the application, it was just during the meeting, and so we were talking about numbers in that meeting. Um, and just for context, i- if, you know, the numbers that were presented by UDAF, uh, saying that, you know, this is how much we're seeking NRCS funding, which is up to fifty percent, uh, the landowners donating, I think it was fifteen percent, uh, they were looking for ten percent, plus or minus from Leroy McAllister, and twenty-five percent from the county or something like that. Even, even at the twenty-five percent level from the county, it represented one percent of our total bond amount, right? So, uh, to me, that's important context whether, whether or not it, it needs to be considered. Um, you know, it's a, it's a, it is a remote property. You can stand out there and see Highway eighty-nine ninety-one in Richmond, and you can see all the cars driving by. So it, from the, from a gateway entry standpoint, it's part of the background that people see when they enter the state from, or the county from the north. And so, uh, but it's not immediately adjacent to the highway. It didn't have, didn't score very well in some of these other categories, and I think that's why the other members of the COZAC wanted to say upfront, hey, you know, some, some applicants that have come in, we haven't even passed on to round two. This one, it's a good project, there's already, um, involvement from the state and other entities to help fund the project. It's further along than some of the other, maybe less desirable projects that have, have come before us. And so I do think there's interest in preserving this. It is a, an amazing farm agricultural operation, uh, represents some of the best farm ground in the county, and what can be grown on that farm ground. So to me, it's very appealing from that perspective, but, you know, it doesn't, you know, admittedly tick off the other boxes as strongly, so, for what it's worth.
Yeah, the rest.
Yeah, there was a council meeting maybe a year ago where COZAC presented, uh, you are here in the phases, and, uh, I don't think others remember what those stages look like, but how many are there total? What, two of two?
Yes.
And then in phase two, that's when we determine that percentage.
Correct.
How do you appropriate that? And maybe to summarize what a few others have said, like, you mentioned the total size of the fund, uh, which this would represent, potentially one percent or less. Uh, Executive Luke mentioned the, uh, relative competition, it's very low of applicants. No one alluded to the score, well, it does have an agricultural, agricultural benefit, it may not have scored as high as others, but I think we should probably take that into consideration. Maybe add one more thing, I would say, what precedent does it state? I imagine in the future, it will be someone that says, I'm applying, I got a fifty-two percent, and you're denying me, you know, how do we handle that? I think you all have some as well, get off first, and give a little appropriate response. I just wanna put that on the record, so we're considering that in the future, that there is some sort of priority.
I would say, um, I think it might be relevant to amend the resolution to exclude Wellsville and to put in Trenton instead for the language.
So it, it just, yes, it just lists by person, so basically, is everyone happy to, you know, when we all say, raise our hands and say, you do it, it's kind of hard to see it all in black and white. So there's your name, there's the boards that you're on, there's your liaison, so is there anyone who feels like they took on more than they? Actually, look at it, boy, I have a pretty happy level with all of them, who is happy with what?
Sandy.
And actually, you don't have all of them. You're having the plan zoom.
Catherine, I'll trade you.
I'll trade you.
I have a question, is the waste consortium executive still a country name? And then the waste consortium is a different name? You have both of those, is that, would you make sense that you'd be, I'm involved in it?
What is the water?
That's on the list.
Water consortium?
There's, but there's a waste consortium, it's.
Brake Committee, that's me. For myself.